Think about it's kind of ass line, but I don't know if you want, you know, we're not getting whole county representation then.
Yeah, but, but then again, at the end of the day, I don't know. What the hell are she gonna do now?
We can always post it again.
We might have to.
That's what I would do. Let's go.
We'll call to order the Benton County Board meeting for December seventeenth. We'll start with the Pledge Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Beth?
Sure. Commissioner Schlangen.
Here.
Commissioner Heinem.
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Pop.
Here.
Oh, no present.
No present today.
No present. All right. Do we, uh, do we have any additions to the?
We have no changes.
Okay.
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. County Board meetings are broadcast live and video recorded on YouTube. Please refrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so the viewers can hear you. The County Board observes Robert's Rules of Orders for its meetings, so please obtain the Board's Chair consent before addressing the County Board. Public comments are generally reserved for open forum segments or public hearings. However, public comment on other agenda items may be allowed at the discretion of the Board Chair. As we begin today, please turn off your cell phones and turn your, or turn your cell phones to vibrate. Thank you. Open forum. Okay, we got nothing. Well, we got a small consent agenda here. Consent agenda items one through twenty-one. What is the wish?
Move for approval, Mr. Chair. Second.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we're going with one page. Monty, we are going to conduct a public hearing on proposed changes to the Benton County fee schedule.
Mr. Chair, we'll begin with a staff report, and we'll ask each department that has changes to come up and give you a very brief, a summary of those changes, and I believe Roxanne will be first. Uh, she's going to cover the changes on page one, Otter Treasure, and then also the Land Services changes, and those page numbers are noted in your agenda item.
Thank you, Roxanne.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So, first off, we have the changes within the Auditor Treasurer's Office, and these are all related to the cannabis retail registration, cannabis temporary events, and then the civil penalty appeal hearing. And because I was the lead on the cannabis ordinance, I, that's why I'm bringing it forward, even though it's the Auditor Treasurer's Office and fee schedule. So what we did is we took what the state allowed us to charge for a retail registration and renewal fee, and we have added that to our fee schedule. It seemed appropriate to charge what we were allowed to charge, considering the amount of effort and work that will need to go into processing these registrations. And then we added a $500 license fee for temporary cannabis events, which is in line with what we charged for our large exhibition events. And then the $500 civil penalty appeal hearing fee, that takes into consideration the time and effort that is needed to process those hearings. Then we have the recorders. In the Recorder's Office, we're increasing the fee of a copy of a Torrance certificate of title from $5 to $10, $10 for a certified copy. That's in line with statute. And then the final addition is for the Planning and Zoning Office, and that is a zoning verification letter would be $50 per letter. The zoning verification letter is generally something that is requested by an attorney or a title company for the sale of a property, and what they want to know is what the zoning is, if there's any additional permits that are on there, any violations. So it requires research on behalf, at the staff level, to provide that letter and that service. So we're looking at $50 per letter, which is consistent with what some other counties are charging for that. And that is all I have for the fees.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Roxanne, I got one question on the special events for cannabis.
Mm-hmm.
Are we putting a limit on the number that we can do in a year?
We do not have a, a limit on the number per year, no.
And does it consist like, say, somebody has an event, I don't know where we'll pick, say, you know, way up in one township, and they want to have cannabis there, is that what would be considered a special event?
Um, so they will need to get a permit first from the state and be qualified as a temporary cannabis event, then it would come to us, and we would go through that entire checklist that we added to the cannabis ordinance for ninety-six. There is no onsite consumption allowed at those events, and they are not overnight events.
Okay.
But they could potentially sell at those.
I see it was a pretty big issue with one of our neighboring counties, especially that.
Okay, okay. Yep, there's some pretty rigorous standards that they'll need to go through, not only with the state but with us as well, in order to be able to hold these events.
Okay. As a note, Roxanne, our fees are in line with other counties as well on what they're doing.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, your next change is Human Services on page ten, as Sandy could cover that.
On the changes for daycare, we're going to charge daycare homes $50, but those charges are actually going to the state. So it's a fee that the state is picking up for daycare homes at renewal time.
So daycare providers will not see that.
They will not see that.
Okay. Okay.
I don't see here, I don't see Chris here unless he's, he's not with us online. Chris's changes are on page thirteen. As I recall, as Chris explained in the Committee of the Whole, our surveyor, our contracted surveyor, Jay Whitsock, is passing along some increases to us, which explains why we need to increase our own fees. And again, you can see those on page thirteen. That's my recollection of that explanation from Chris. Final batch of changes be Sheriff Trahick, and those start on page thirteen.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning. So we're proposing reorganizing, reclassifying some fees, and also raising a couple of others. So to begin with, on page thirteen, you'll see that we're deleting the fee titled "Sale Notice." We are adding that back in on page fourteen. This is a notice that we are required to post for a judicial, judicial foreclosure. We're required to post that at three different locations. Our standard fee for each trip that a deputy makes is $75, so the $225 for this posting notice of sale accounts for three trips at $75 a trip. We also are involved in writ of recovery service when a landlord has a renter that's broken their lease for whatever reason, they go through the court process. We are involved in that in posting the, posting or serving the notice of recovery, and then actually going to the property with the landlord and securing that. Those, that's once again $75 each trip, and we are, instead of having two different fees to reflect the service and then standing by, we're combining that into one, $150 fee. You'll see a little bit farther down on page thirteen, we're eliminating the language that indicated some of the redemption fees were refundable. We are changing that to reflect that they're non-refundable as per statute and in line with our other counties around us. And finally, we regularly do an analysis of how much it costs the county to process permit to carry fees. We have to, we have to send $10 for every renewal, I'm sorry, $10 for every new application and $5 for every renewal into the state of Minnesota. The rest of that fee there, going from $70 to $80 for permit to carry initial, and from sixty-five to seventy-five reflects basically an inflated cost of labor for us to process those fees. That's all I have for you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Chris Monty took care of yours, so. Any left?
Uh, no, sir, that's it.
Okay. With that, we heard from staff. The applicant is Benton County. We will now open a public hearing. If there's any, anyone in the audience who wishes to address the County Board on this agenda, please come to the podium, give your name and address. Or online. Is there anybody in the audience or online that would like to address the County Board on these fee schedules? I'll ask again, is there anybody online or in the boardroom that would like to address the County Board on these fee schedules? Last call. All right. I will, I will close the public meeting. Are there any emails, letters from townships, cities, or anything like that? Okay. Has any department received any comments?
Not that I know of.
Okay. Uh, action. What would, what would the County Board like to do?
Motion to adopt the revised Benton County fee schedule, with changes effective January first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion to adopt the proposed changes to the two thousand and twenty-five fee schedule. We got a motion in a second, is there any other questions on this? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor? Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. Roxanne, you're back up with another public hearing to consider ordinance number four ninety-seven to amend Benton County Development Code Ordinance number four seven-seven to add provisions for regulation of cannabis business within the county zoning jurisdiction. You have the floor.
Okay. I think that works, so everyone online can see. Okay. So before you, we have the zoning ordinance related to cannabis businesses. The first draft of the ordinance was presented to the Planning Commission on October seventeenth. There was consensus to change all of the uses that were listed as conditional uses to interim use permits, and the reason behind that was to make sure that, that there was a sunset date or, and the ability to sunset date those uses, and we'll get into more specifics on that. So that was changed, and that was something that I think a lot of other counties were looking at changing to, was from conditional to interim use permit. I presented the ordinance to the Committee of the Whole on October twenty-first, and there was agreement to move forward on that. I sent out an invitation of the, to review and comment on the draft ordinance to all township supervisors and clerks, and asked them to attend the November fourteenth Planning Commission meeting to further discuss that. At the meeting, we only had three township supervisors attend, and there really was no comments about changing or amending the ordinance as presented. So then further, we went and held the public hearing on December twelfth at six PM, and there was no one present to comment on the ordinance at that public hearing, so we did move forward with bringing this to you today. So enclosed is the draft cannabis ordinance, and it was prepared by staff in coordination with the Attorney's Office. It's based on review of Minnesota Statute three forty-two. The draft rules prepared by OCM, several information sessions, and discussion with counterparts in other counties, outreach to cities, towns, and training sessions throughout the state. The ordinance was prepared in a way that addresses the type of use and the potential effects on surrounding properties versus the license type. So we wanted to make sure that it was clear what these individual businesses were doing versus what they were licensed for. And then the areas that we took into consideration were the use of water, the electrical grid, odor, security, lighting, and waste. So the following is just a summary of the draft ordinance. Section three is the definitions. We added definitions based on state statute, addressing cannabis businesses, cultivation, delivery services, and, and the rest of the definitions under cannabis businesses for statute. Section seven is the zoning use districts, and you can see in the zoning chart, we have added where we felt appropriate, and which was consistent with our existing ordinance, the location for things such as indoor cultivation, outdoor cultivation, mixed light cultivation, which would be if someone were to have, let's say, a greenhouse where it could be open during daylight hours and then closed up in the evening so that they can continue providing that light source to it. We've added manufacturing, retail of both hemp and cannabis, testing, transport, and wholesale, and this is essentially all of the aspects that make up the licensing components. So we've added those as interim use permits permitted by right or as an accessory use only. So for example, someone could have a delivery service as an accessory use to an existing, for example, a cannabis cultivation business, they could have a delivery service attached to that, but they could not have a standalone delivery service in our agricultural district. Section nine is our special provisions. So specifically, nine point two seven point one through point three requires the operation of cannabis business and hemp to be in accordance with four ninety-six, which is our cannabis regulation, retail and regulation that was passed at the previous, or the November meeting. And then businesses must provide us evidence of OCM approval of the license and/or endorsements. Section nine, two seven, four is our setbacks, so again, requiring that they meet the setbacks as outlined in four ninety-six. And then we did add that cannabis testing, cultivation, and manufacturing must be six hundred and sixty feet from residentially used or zoned property, and that's due to the odor that may be associated with these. You may have outdoor cultivation, but there still is an odor when that product begins to dry. And so we've added that, that additional stipulation for these, for those specific types of uses. Nine point two seven point five is hours of operation. Again, retail is to follow ordinance four ninety-six, and then all others are to indicate their hours of operation on their application, and this is similar to what we would do for a rural event venue, for mining operations, other similar intense uses, where we just want to know what are those hours of operation, and then we'll take into consideration what's around those businesses, and, you know, if there's going to be outdoor operations versus everything will be strictly indoor. Screening, we are requiring a six-foot-high obscure fence topped with a, with a three-stranded barbed wire extender arm to completely surround outdoor and mixed light cultivation facilities for screening and security purposes, and then security fencing is required by OCM for certain uses. This is just to prevent anybody trying to get into these facilities and hopefully providing some sort of security for those sites, preventing the need for additional law enforcement protection or anything like that. The six-foot-high fence is required for outdoor at, per OCM's requirements. We've just added a little bit to strengthen that for, for Benton County. Odor, odor is not to be detectable beyond the exterior of the property, and there are to install proper ventilation and filtration systems. This is highly regulated by OCM, so we've just complemented their, their requirements. Security, again, we're adding security as required by OCM. That is something that they're requiring as part of their application and approval for the license, and we just want to make sure that we're receiving a copy of that security plan. Lighting shall be provided for security purposes. No outdoor grow lights shall be used between seven PM and seven AM, and that's strictly your outdoor grow lights, pretty intense lights. We would want to make sure that, that, you know, we're not interfering with surrounding properties. And then no light shall escape mixed light cultivation facilities between sunset and sunrise. Just making sure that if they're going to open those facilities up when they close them, they're secure and closed so that we don't have beams of light coming out of those. Water and solid waste shall follow all local, state, and federal requirements, and we reference back to our solid waste ordinance. And then here comes the termination clauses that are with our interim use permits, and that's, the IUP may be terminated upon any of the following events: change of ownership, change of OCM license holder, it's revoked, expired, or otherwise terminated earlier. And that is what I have for our cannabis zoning ordinance, and I have not received comments from any of the cities, townships. Again, they were all invited and received this notice.
Perfect. Thanks, Roxanne. We will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience or online who wishes to address the County Board on this agenda item? If there is, please come to the podium and state your name and address. Anybody online? Make another call, anybody in the audience or online that would like to address the County Board on this ordinance? Final call? Okay, we are going to now close the public hearing. There's been no letters, no departments have any concerns?
No.
Sheriff Heck is all on board with this? So, uh, action. What would the County Board like to do?
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion in a second to the ordinance number four ninety-seven to amend Benton County Development Code Ordinance number four seventy-seven to add provisions for regulations of cannabis business within the county zoning jurisdiction. Any other questions? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor? Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Roxanne.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your work on this.
Yeah. And more to come, right?
Yeah. Ever-changing. All right, we'll continue.
Okay, so the next item I have is an agreement with Bogart Peterson and Associates for Wetland Conservation Act Administration Assistance. We previously had an agreement with Bogart Peterson to assist us through this transition period while we were looking for a new employee for that position, for the Wetland and Solid Waste Lead Program Manager position, as it's called now. We have hired an individual, this individual does not start until January twenty-first. During that time, we are looking to contract, re-execute a contract with Bogart Peterson to assist us to, to be our LGU for WACA administration, at least until January twenty-first, when that individual starts. And then beyond that, they would serve in an assistance role as needed to assist the new individual in learning the WACA administration process, assisting with guidance on applications that come in, and, and just making sure that overall this individual feels confident and comfortable in this position and is doing the best that we can for Benton County. Things have been working very, very well with Bogart Peterson these last few months, and I think this would be an excellent opportunity to get an employee trained in, and trained in well. I do have the contract extended all the way until December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-five, and that's just to make sure that we don't need to come back if, for any reason that may come up, but it does cover us in the event that we need them, and hopefully, hopefully we will be able to not use their, their services sooner than, than later. But for the time being, I think they've been doing a great job. Of course, there is a cost with that. They did extend the $110 per hour fee for that, and we'll use what we can of WACA and then use the Planning and Zoning General account.
Mr. Chair, I'll add to Roxanne's comments. I've heard nothing but positive remarks from landowners.
Right.
That have been dealing with WACA stuff, so.
Good.
All right. With that, Mr. Chair, I'll move for approval, the agreement with Bogart Peterson Associates for assistance in the administration of WACA, and authorize the chair to sign the agreement.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. Any other questions? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor? Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you again, Roxanne.
Thank you.
We will move on to Sheriff Heck. Consider the contract with Tyler Technologies for purchase of updated CAD RMS system and joint powers agreement. Foley Rice, Sock Rapids, for the cost-sharing plan related to the purchase of this shared system. You have the floor.
Very brief title for you.
Yeah.
So I'm here to talk today about the computer-generated dispatch and records management system that we have at the sheriff's office. This is the system that takes in all the data, manages it, flows it through our office, stores it. It's a mission-critical piece of our operation over there. In two thousand and sixteen, we moved from a product that was at that time owned by Central Square to our current product, LETG, primarily because we were dissatisfied with the service that we were getting from Central Square to maintain and improve the product that we had. At, in two thousand and sixteen, I had really hoped that that would be the last time I had talked to you about a CAD RMS system, but here we are. The advantage that we gained in moving to the LETG system that we currently have is that it now became a shared record system between ourselves, Sock Rapids, Foley, and Rice. This enables any officer anywhere in the county to be able to gain all the intelligence on a person that any of our other agencies have gathered over time, and it's really an enhancement to the work they can do. We're no longer siloed, and we're able to be more efficient at sharing information, keeping officers safer, making investigations go smoother. We've been operating on the LETG system, as I said, since two thousand and sixteen. Unfortunately, in the eight years since we signed on with them, they've been bought out by two other larger software companies, most recently Central Square. So here we are again. Central Square has made it clear that the LETG product is basically their minimum maintenance road of their suite. They've, through various memos and actions that they've taken and reversed, have indicated that they're not putting any more money into development. This product gets the lowest attention on their, on their hierarchy, so it's become untenable to continue forward with LETG. In two thousand and twenty-three, we got together as a Benton County law enforcement group of, and we talked about what are we going to do next? We recognized the need to move on and came up with a strategy for what we're going to do to transition to our next system. So over the following months, since May of two thousand and twenty-three, we've had a lot of meetings with software companies that have come in and put on their demos. We've had meetings together with our staff and meetings together as a group of We've had meetings together with our staff and meetings together as a group of chiefs to talk about what's the right move for us. As we're exploring what our other options are, a unique opportunity presented itself as Stearns County was also in the process of selecting their next vendor. They went through their RFP process over there, and their selection was Tyler Technologies. We considered Tyler because they have, they have an excellent product and because of this potential, potential partnership with Stearns. What came out of all of our deliberations was to select Tyler as a product to go forward. So what we're proposing is to enter into a contract with Tyler to create a shared system between not only all the Benton agencies, but all the Stearns agencies as well. The system envisions our portion of the system living on the Stearns County infrastructure, saving us the cost of having to come up with our own infrastructure or invest in cloud infrastructure. It is a robust system. As I said, it was the one selected by all of our staff internally, select by all of our partners. We think it is a system that is going to move us forward into the future and be a real bonus to, to our law enforcement information sharing needs. There are portions of this system that are used exclusively by the sheriff's office, and then there are portions that are shared equally by all the law enforcement partners. So as we're coming up with how to pay for this, we recognize that the sheriff's office should be responsible for the systems that are used solely by the sheriff's office and that we would share costs for the parts of the system used by all users. Our agreement among the chiefs that we're bringing here to be codified by all of the government agencies is that we would share those systems according to the population, the percentage of Benton County's population served by each law enforcement agency. When you break that down according to the definition in the joint powers agreement, it comes up with Benton County shouldering forty-four percent of the shared costs, Sock Rapids shouldering forty-two, Foley picking up eight percent, and Rice picking up six percent. So as we work through this agreement and through the, through the model to pay for this, one of our other priorities here at the Benton County Sheriff's Office was to find a way to do this with non-levy dollars to the extent that was possible. This is a big lift. It's very expensive. So we found ways to do that without affecting the tax levy. We were fortunate to get public safety aid from the state of Minnesota in 2023, and in our plan for how we were going to spend that, we reserved a significant portion, just a little under fifty percent of that for this project. And that is enough to pay for the portion that needs to come from the public safety aid. We're also paying for this out of E nine-one-one funds, inmate welfare funds, and as I said, the public safety aid. The purchase price is coming at a cost of zero to the levy. There are ongoing costs that would be paid by each of these funds going forward, including about twenty-five thousand dollars that will come out of the levy, and that money already exists in my budget to continue to pay fees that we would have been paying for LETG. As I said, we think that this is the system to move forward with. We've got a funding plan for it, so we're seeking, seeking the board's commitment to our cost-sharing in the joint powers agreement and to signing the contract with Tyler to move forward purchasing this system. So I'd be happy entertaining any questions that you have, and also Charles Olson from Tyler Technologies is here if you have any questions relating to functionality or the Tyler contract.
Mr. Chair.
Board.
So Troy, you said that twenty-five thousand is the annual going-forward cost?
Yes.
Okay, and that'll be shared equally on the percentage that you give us?
So, not quite. So twenty-five thousand dollars is our total of the Benton County-only recurring costs and the Benton County shared recurring costs. And as I said, right now in my budget, I'm paying pretty much that to LETG every year for their system.
And then our partners will pick up their share?
Right, so our partners, like, for instance, Sock Rapids pays about ten thousand each year, Foley pays about two thousand, and Rice pays about fifteen hundred dollars in recurring costs.
I'm assuming they ran that past their city council people?
Yes, so I have, this joint powers agreement has been approved by Sock Rapids and Foley, and it's going before the Rice City Council shortly.
Okay. Okay. Answered my question, Sheriff?
Yep.
I asked what you were currently paying with your existing budget, so, thank you.
I was going to ask and make sure that this got through the other cities, including Sock Rapids, so.
Yes.
All right, what would the board like to do?
I'll move for approval, Mr. Chair, of the, to contact Tyler Technologies for the purchase and updates of CAD slash RMS system.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any other last questions on this? Not, I'll call the question. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you.
I think we should comment or commend the sheriff for working with Stearns County, too.
Yeah, absolutely, all the partners. It's like herding cattle, making sure everybody's on the same page, especially when it's cost-sharing.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to Sandy.
Yes, so I have Jessica Brandon, the executive director of Central Minnesota Mental Health Center here today. I've got some handouts to give each of you. She is going to give you an overview of how we're changing, they are changed their services from a detox model to a withdrawal management model. And after her presentation, then I would ask for approval of a contract with Central Minnesota Mental Health Center for 2025.
Jessica?
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Jessica Brandon, and I am the CEO of Central Minnesota Mental Health Center. I'm joined by Robin Metusian, who's the agency's chief operating officer. And as Sandy mentioned, we are here to discuss a transition from our original detox model to a withdrawal management services model. This, oop.
Be careful.
The transition services came about for sort of two main reasons. So as you can see on the first slide, for the last several years, the detox program has been basically financially insolvent. So we've been really struggling to try and figure out how to pay for these services. And so we approached the counties to talk about that, because as I'm sure you're all aware, every county is statutorily required to offer detox services to folks in their county who need access to them. And so we were trying to figure out creative ways to work together with the counties to make sure that these services are available. We've been a long-term provider of these services to Benton County. The agency started in nineteen fifty-nine. We've offered detox services for much of the time of our existence, and this is an important program available for people who need it most. As you probably all know, Central Minnesota Mental Health Center provides a wide range of chemical health and mental health services to the community. But again, today, we're going to focus on what was called detox. So in May of 2023, when I was relatively new in my position, we started talking about the problems that we were having with the payment model. So the reimbursements that we were receiving for services were not sufficient. It's certainly no secret to you or anyone else that the cost of services has increased exponentially over the last many years, and our rates hadn't kept up. So when we approached the counties to talk about the problems that we were having, what we were finding is, imagine that, that there wasn't a lot of extra money rolling around to pay for more services. So we wanted to come up, like I said, with some creative solutions to do that. So we approached the counties about converting from detox services to withdrawal management services. And so that's a little complicated, and I don't want to give you more information than you need about that, but think of withdrawal management services as detox plus some additional services. So we're still continuing to provide the detox services that are statutorily required for counties to provide. But on top of that, the services also include a comprehensive evaluation and support from our staff to get the person from detox to ongoing treatment. So the goal here is that they won't continue to utilize detox services, that we're helping people bridge the gap from the original point of service access, so the detox part, but getting them into long-term treatment. Interestingly, the withdrawal management model has sort of two main benefits. So one is the better clinical care that I talked about. So we're not talking about sort of the revolving door of detox, where if somebody has a chemical health problem, they just continue to come back. We sober them up, they go home, then when they need to be sobered up again, they come back to us. This is really about an ongoing solution to treatment. But it also created some financial benefits for the counties and for CMMHC. So it shifted payment for folks who qualify for medical assistance, so who have an MA or PMAP or Behavioral Health Fund eligibility. So detox is not covered by any of those payment sources, but withdrawal management is. I'm going to turn it over to Robin now to talk more specifically about the findings.
So if you look at this slide that's labeled Benton County, this is through October thirty-first of this year, and this is showing you how much the county has saved by shifting the billing to the MAPM and Behavioral Health Fund. So you can see thirty-five of the clients ended up on the MAPM, and three clients ended up on Behavioral Health Fund. Now, I say this is through October thirty-first. We met a couple weeks ago to discuss the August and September bill, and we know there are also clients on there that are going to end up on MA or Behavioral Health Fund. The county's working to get them, so that number will even shift even more. Under the detox model, all eighty-seven of those people would have been billed to the county. There was, there wasn't any other funding source. Rarely, rarely, we would have a commercial insurance that would pay something, but it was, I've been there twelve years, it was very rare. So if you go to the next slide, you'll see the total cost to the counties. This is why we proposed this so many months ago with withdrawal management. You can see how much the cost to the counties has gone down from twenty-two to twenty-four, and as Jessica mentioned, you know, the cost of services obviously has gone up. Everything else has gone up, so the fact that we could, we could provide this service to the residents of the county and save the county money and also offer a better service. As Jessica said, this is, this is an enhanced service. It's not just detox. So we're saving the county money, we're offering the residents a better service, and that's what we're proposing.
Mr. Chair, if I could, Sandy, how was the county portion being paid? Is that levy dollars?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
However, we also do go back as well and bill some of the patients for that. So depending on their income, there's a sliding fee scale. Some individuals end up paying their whole bill themselves, and some end up paying a portion or none.
Okay.
Just to go ahead, do you know what percentage it is that pay a portion or none?
Oh, great percentage pay a portion or none, or on cooperative.
Yeah, okay. So based on the two thousand twenty-two of a hundred thousand nine ninety-eight, that was all levy, too?
Yes.
Okay. How do we pre-plan for that, or just do we go off historical?
Yes.
Okay.
How are you recouping those losses or the money loss, the eight hundred and fifty thousand?
The agency is a nonprofit, so we do a combination of fundraising, and we also have other services that are not underwater. So some of the income that we generate from our other fee-for-services programs are helping to subsidize this. But as costs continue to increase, we're having more and more difficulty covering those costs.
Is the state going to step up to help out some more?
We certainly hope so. Withdrawal management is a model for the state of Minnesota, too, and so the reimbursement rates haven't caught up with the additional cost of the services. So we certainly hope so, but as I'm sure you all know, the lobbying process for increasing state rates on anything is a long process. So we're trying to be creative locally to figure out how to bridge the gap between now and when the state catches up with a new service model.
Sure. Okay.
Yeah, whatever. Sorry, didn't mean to say that.
Yeah.
Yeah, you did.
With that.
I did, I did mean to say that, they just won't hear it.
With that, what, what are, what is the wishes of the county?
I'm going to make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-five contract with Central Minnesota Health, Central Minnesota Mental Health Care for Withdrawal Management.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any other questions? If I got a comment, seems like a no-brainer to me, so.
Yeah.
All right.
Hopefully, we can recover some extra funds out of this, too, of course.
Thank you.
We got a motion and a second. I'll call a question. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Same sign, motion carries. Thank you. And we'll move right on to your next agenda item.
So I had hoped today to come with a contract with Stearns Bank and children, First Children's Finance. However, we have not yet been able to do a contract. It has nothing to do with Benton County. It has to do with some agreement between those two agencies, trying to figure out how they might develop a contract to provide loans and grants to childcare providers in our county. The idea was to attract new providers and maintain current providers and improve their business models. So the money we had previously dedicated towards this was set to be spent by the end of twenty twenty-four, so I would need a new motion to extend that into the coming year and rededicate that money. We had fifty thousand dollars, we have seventeen thousand, one hundred and twenty left. So I think we could spend it the same way we were spending it. We no longer would pay for their licenses, but we were paying for things like CPR, and we had an incentive at one point five hundred dollars to get licensed. We could still do that if the bank, the bank program does not work out, but I would like to try the bank program if possible, and would like, hope to come back to you with one or the other of the programs. But we do need to dedicate that money to keep the ARPA funds, is my understanding, before the end of the year, which is today. So I'd hope to have a contract. I do not.
Monty, we can, we can extend this. It just needs to be spent.
Yeah, we went back and looked at the old motion, and it was that the money would be obligated to end of this year. So we thought to clean it up, we should get a new motion to commit it to the purposes described by Sandy through the end of twenty-six.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's a no-brainer.
I mean, we got the money in there.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
Just allocate it for another year, that's all we're doing. I'm going to make that motion, dedication of up to seventeen thousand one hundred and twenty dollars ARPA funds towards administration of the Childcare Home Loan Grant Program to be administered by Stearns Bank, or hopefully administered by Stearns Bank.
Maybe we could have it be the recruitment and support of foster, foster care providers?
Right, yep, I would agree with that.
Instead of, Mr. Chair, instead of listing the bank as the sole entity?
Correct. So did we get that motion? Probably not.
Second.
Are we clear on that, Beth?
Yeah.
On what we're doing?
We're taking out Stearns Bank and First Children's Finance and putting in foster.
Recruitment and support of Benton County Foster Care Homes.
Yep.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. I think it's a no-brainer. Sandy, I want to thank you and your whole group for anything you do with childcare, because that is, as everybody knows, it's a very big issue.
Yeah.
And the more that we can help out bring in new providers, that's going to help out all the residents with their workforce and you name it, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll call the question. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Same sign, motion carries.
Mr. Chair, if I could interrupt you, maybe in response to Sandy's time here, could we move to Community Health Board, recessed county board?
Yeah.
Move into that?
That would be great.
Quite an extended agenda that she would have to sit here for.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. I will turn it over to.
That's Jaclyn.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Yes.
Even though Sandy was looking at me like, what are you talking about?
Thank you for the correction. I'm still trying to get used to that. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, you got one more comment? I hope that we'll vet this pretty with Stearns Bank if this is going forward, that that's evented pretty well.
Yes.
Between the county attorneys and whatever.
Yes.
Okay, got it.
All right, I think we're going to move right on to Christine, then.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
So before you, we have the establishment of the Benton County absentee and Yocava ballot board for the twenty twenty-five election season. Currently, right now, we're going to have three elections, one February eleventh for District Forty-seven, the March Township election, and then in May, the St. Cloud and Sartell School districts will have a special election. So I just look for an approval of a resolution of establishing the absentee ballot board for twenty twenty-five.
So move.
I'll second it.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any other questions?
Right.
So, go ahead.
Comments? You're first.
We were at Rice City Council, Chris Burden and myself, last night, and had a presentation. And as you know, I was a little slow to the, to the thinking part. And as you know, I was a little slow to the, to the thinking part. Didn't the school district piggyback on their elections? Township officials have theirs.
I'm not sure on that one.
I mean, you know, it was after the fact because Superintendent was there. But you look at the convenience and everything else that it would have done to some of the members with that, you know, where the townships have the election.
Mm-hmm.
I know the township is like its own election and its own election administrator. So I'm not sure why it didn't go off of that. But I know that they typically don't go off of a general election because of the turnout.
Right.
So.
I thought it could have saved some money, maybe.
Mr. Chair, I got a question. So it says that it's forty-three dollars per hour Benton County staff time. That seems a little low in my opinion.
That's on to the next one, so.
Oh, okay, sorry.
You're scooting ahead.
Okay. We got a motion and a second on the first resolution. I'll call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll move on to the ISD forty-seven.
So the school district asked us to assist them in their standalone election. We came up with this agreement and they had signed it at their board meeting last weekend, last Monday. I see you're questioning the forty-three dollars. I believe we can only recoup exactly what, what it's costing us. So that's for that person.
Okay, I was just questioning that, Mr. Chair. It just seems awful low on my end, but you know, it is what it is.
Mr. Chair, Monty, I would assume that forty-three dollars includes their salary and their benefits and the whole type of thing.
At forty-three, I would say yes. That's gonna include health insurance and Social Security, Medicare, that sort of thing, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. That sounds about right.
So just for an approval and a signature on this agreement with School District Forty-seven.
My computer's froze up.
It's got the Sauk Rapids Commissioners written all over it.
Yeah.
I will make a motion that we enter into this agreement.
And then I'm gonna second it, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. I wanna think, I have never realized how much goes into elections. And I'm telling you that they keep getting worse and worse on what you gotta do and, and everything you gotta go through, so. I thank you and your staff for everything you guys do because it's, a lot of it goes unseen.
Sure.
Until there's an issue like Scott County.
And unfunded.
Yeah.
And unfunded.
Yeah, unfunded, yeah, that's a good one. So with that, thank you again to you and your team. I'll, I'll call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you.
Monty, whenever you're ready.
I think I have the next eighty-five agenda items.
That's all right, that'll give my computer.
You get out of the first hour, one of them.
That'll give my computer time to reboot here.
Let's see here. Here it is. All right. Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, at the AMC Annual Conference just last week, Benton County was recognized for its performance by MCAT and the Work Comp Division. And you all posed for a nice photo up on the stage and Shannon has here. So, Mr. Chair, I wanted maybe just elaborate a little bit on, you know, what does this mean? And I think, you know, MCAT looks at all facets of your risk management and work comp performance. In other words, do you promptly report injuries? Do you, do you provide good reports, thorough reports so MCAT can investigate? Do you assist employees in returning to work? Let's just say, for example, they have an injury, but they can do some work. Do you help find them light duty to get them back into their position? I know we've done that in a few instances over the past year. Do you have an active, engaged safety committee? We do. And again, so Shannon organizes that group. She, she gives them an agenda, brings them together. And they talk about injuries and they talk about policies. Do you have updated risk management policies? Do you do safety training? So I want to kind of give you the impression it's, it's a whole basket of issues that helped that MCAT pays attention to that resulted in our county being recognized. And I want to make sure I acknowledge Shannon and her leadership of the Safety Committee. I know Jeff is a big part of that too. For example, MCAT comes through and does inspections of our facilities and Jeff goes along with them. And they identify areas where we can make improvements. So let's just say, for example, some guard is missing on a piece of equipment. Okay, let's fix it. So that's something Jeff is very much involved in, also is a member of the Safety Committee. So I want to make sure and acknowledge Shannon and the members of our Safety Committee that resulted in us getting this recognition. So. So we're gonna ask Shannon to come on up for another picture with the board chair. I'm on.
Hi, thanks.
And you're welcome.
Before we do this picture, I just want to commend the whole staff for this accomplishment. This is a very big award at the AMC Conference and it is number, it is the first award they give out. So everybody's paying attention.
Right.
It is, it is, it is, we're, we're very proud to, to have, have your, have the staff do what they did and to be recognized like this. We didn't have anything to do other than stand up there, take a picture. We almost had Shannon do a little speech, but she did not want to, so.
Yeah, now's the time for the speech, Ed.
Say that for later. Board, you got anything else to?
Just that MCIT is the main sponsor of that luncheon on Tuesday. That's kind of why it's front and center.
They do that, yeah, sure. Great. All right. All right. Or do you want to come down?
No.
No? You wanna think about it?
I already thought about it.
We thought about it, yeah.
Thank you again.
Yep.
We will shake your hand. Thanks, Shannon. Everything.
Jeff, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Thank you, Shannon.
We probably, we probably wouldn't survive this year without Shannon.
No.
You know, with that, we should give a round of applause for all of our staff. This goes throughout the county. I mean, every employee has a part in this, so thank you. All right.
If I may amend, there we go. Don't do it to me, don't do it to me.
Kind of on a roll.
All right, mine's really froze up. Okay, there we go. Okay.
I think, Amanda, you maybe? Let's see. Shut off.
I can just advance.
You can just choose a mouse, okay, yeah.
You know, it's really nice as long as they're still getting things ready. Last year, we had the broadband award.
Correct.
This year, we got this award.
What are we gonna do next?
What's coming up?
Yeah, what's?
Yeah.
And just for those, we've never got an award prior to last year at any of the conferences I've been at. Years ago, we got something, I know.
We were MCAT County of the Year back in like two thousand and one, I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Well, something to work on again for next year, right?
Well, good morning, Chair and Board of Commissioners. I wanted to kind of go over again, second year in a row, the Minnesota City Participation Program. You heard about this last year around this time. And we kind of, kind of worked on it, tried it out, see if it was a good fit for our county and, and our city partners. And it seemed like it was a really good fit. So I just wanted to go over it again with you, just to get you familiar with the Minnesota City Participation Program, which uses tax-exempt bond housing pool allocation authorized by the Office of Minnesota Management and Budget to enable communities throughout the state to efficiently provide first-time homebuyer loans in their community without any administrative burden on our part or the county's part of running their own bond program. The first-time homebuyer, homebuyers access the programs through their local lenders. So there's really no administration on our part. They have access to the down payment and closing cost assistance if needed on new home purchases in and across the county or potentially even refinancing of their existing homes. In your packet, you should have the presentation, which was presented last year, but I'll quickly go over it. We don't need to go into too much detail. The program application and commitment agreement. Every year, we need to commit to the, to the program so that we have access to these bond pool funding. And then we need to submit the application. The only administrative part on our part is to submit the application to Minnesota Housing between January second and Jan, and January fifteenth. So that's kind of the timeframe. Last year, I'll just kind of quickly go over it. Last year, we did two loans. Our two loans were allocated for deferred down payment assistance for two residential properties in the county outside of city limits. Now, the city of Foley, city of Sauk Rapids have, and city St. Cloud, city of Sartell have also participated in the program this last year. And also in your packet is this really fun spreadsheet that kind of lays out the allocation amounts that were received by the county and all of our city partners and then the loans that were committed as part of the program for down payment assistance. So you can kind of see and track some of the progress of this program. Foley, let's just, for example, let's just go through. Benton County received an allocation amount of two hundred and seventy-five thousand and seventy-five dollars. Then we have two committed loans, which we met the obligation amount. And the down payment assistance, total down payment assistance received in the county absent of the city partners is thirty-three thousand. And Foley, the allocation amount last year, they, that was the first year participating in the program. They received a hundred thousand. However, they had six committed loans within the city limits. Their committed amount was just over a million dollars, which of course they met that need. And their down payment assistance and closing cost assistance resulted in a hundred and twenty-three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. Sartell did eight committed loans, Sauk Rapids did eleven. Sauk Rapids was brand new to the program last year. So there, there's a lot of activity and a lot of need for down payment assistance and closing cost assistance in our county. It helps bridge the gap between the cost of the homes and what the homebuyers have to bring to the table. Oftentimes, we hear that there's a gap in what is needed for down payment assistance in some of these homes. So it's a really great program. Again, very little administrative burden. We have access to those state bonding funds through that housing pool. So it's a, it's a really great program. It seemed to work out really well and we met the need and obligation last, this year, so we can apply for it again this next year. So I'm just gonna kind of run through the presentation real quick. We're just gonna kind of go quickly over the MCC program, the participation benefits, and the home mortgage overview, the application project, process and what to expect. So this is Minnesota Housing's mission is the foundation for success so we can collaborate with individuals, communities and partners, create, preserve and finance affordable housing. Again, it's to provide first-time homebuyer loans in the community. Cities can apply, counties can apply, we can apply as a multi-county. We just need to collaborate together, which we have been doing. These are the counties in the state that are colored that participate in the program.
Amanda?
Yes.
One question. I know it's probably a technicality and I, I tend to like them, but it says first-time homebuyer in your community. So is, do you gotta be the first-time homebuyer ever or just in your community?
Nope, actually, there's a criteria that you need to meet. I think it might be in this presentation. But if you haven't owned a home in, I think it's like four years or something like that, you can re, apply for the program.
All right.
So it is to promote first-time homeownership in the community, to access down payment and closing cost assistance. They're loans, they're not grants, so you do have to pay that, those funds back. But a minimal administrative burden on our part. It's dedicated funding for our community. They do all the marketing outreach. They give us the information, we deliver it to our lenders.
I think on the payback, isn't it, isn't it paid back at the time of, of payoff of the loan or when you sell the house?
It could be amortized over the term of the loan, so thirty years, or payoff at the end. It depends on how the, what program they use and how it was structured.
Okay.
There's no cost to the county, no application or fee in twenty-twenty-five. And then we get monthly reports. So if you want those monthly reports, I can certainly forward them to Monty and you can get them every month. Maybe you don't want them. I'll give you the summary at the end of the year.
Maybe halfway through the year if we could.
Yeah, maybe once.
I'm, I'm sure Monty would love to have those reports.
Yeah, I get them, so I monitor them internally in our office. But I provided you with the overall report at the end of the year. So there's a couple of different programs with Minnesota Housing. This is the first-time homebuyer program. They have, they call it the startup program, which you have access to down payment and closing cost loans. You have to meet with a participating lender that is, that has gone through the vetting process through Minnesota Housing to access these funds. And the other programs are called Step Up and Fix Up. So you can do a home improvement loan or repeat homebuyer loan as well. So if you're purchasing or refinancing an existing loan. So basically how it works, you have your base product, which is your conventional financing through FHA, VA or Rural Development. And then you work with a lender to access the Minnesota Housing program for the first mortgage products, a step or, step-up or startup programs. And then Minnesota Housing provides those down payment and closing cost loans as part of the closing process. So the borrower, the lender, US Bank services the loans and then Minnesota Housing provides the funding. You can find a participating lender in the area. I think last I looked, there were two participating lenders in Benton County specifically, but in a broader scope, there's over twenty-five lenders that participate in the program. There are eligibility requirements. So you, the borrowers that participate in this program, there are limits for housing prices. You do still need to meet all your credit limits and go through homebuyer education. So in the county, if we're looking at Benton County specifically, the home price limit is you can purchase a home up to four hundred and seventy-two thousand. Credit requirements, you have to have a minimum credit score of six forty, maximum debt-to-income ratio and down payment and, and closing cost loan eligibility to, in order to, to qualify for the program. And then you have to go through the homebuyer education. This is specifically for the startup program. Household size, anywhere from one to two. We, we're looking at, we're not in the Leaven County metro area. Dodge and Olmsted Counties, obviously not. But if we're looking at the column where it says all counties, the income limits are pretty generous, a hundred and eleven thousand eight hundred dollars. If you have a household size of one to two and three plus is a hundred and twenty-eight five. So pretty generous. The MCCP eligibility requirements, the property just has to be located in the jurisdiction, so in the county. So the city, the cities that are participating, so city of Foley, city of Sauk Rapids, Sartell and St. Cloud, they have their own program. And those homes that are located in those specific jurisdiction qualify for their funding pool allocation. And the balance of the county can be utilized by our allocation. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. And then the borrowers, borrowers' income is at least at or below eighty percent of the area median income. So as I mentioned, just the kind of the application process for the county is that Minnesota Housing. is that Minnesota Housing emails are the participants in application and agreement, which you have in your packet. We will present the information, and then you, you know, act on that information. We'll give it back and get it back to Minnesota Housing. And then Minnesota Housing allocates a bond amount for the county in January, February likely. And then we work with all of the lenders to spread the word about the program, so the lenders are familiar with the program and and provide them with all of the marketing materials. So really, that's the nuts and bolts of it. We kind of went through all of those other slides, but we need to, in order to for us to requalify for next year, we need to use at least 50% of the allocation between January 16th and November 30th, which we certainly met that. We can always consider changing the participation level. The nice thing about this program is if we go over our allocated bonding amount, we can pool in funds from other they'll pool in funds from other communities that haven't spent their bonding amount. And so we can never really go over, if that makes sense. There is always funds out there. So these are just some of the brochures and monthly reports that we I get a newsletter every month. I can certainly share that with you if we'd like, although I'm thinking maybe you get enough emails. But we do get these usage reports, which are included in your application, and I just kind of ran through those a little bit. But this is just an example of what those usage reports are. It identifies the county, what the startup loans, step up loans, total loan activity in the county, and then the down payment and closing cost assistance that was given to each one of those loans. So you can kind of see what that looks like. This just talks about the marketing that we've that we push out. But other than that, it seemed like it was a really great program, is very successful, especially with our city partners, and then also with the county, and we met our need and obligation. And I'd like to reconsider doing that again for 2025.
Mr. Chair, you know, I was surprised for a new program that you had 11 of them in Stock Rapids, I believe the number was, and six of them in Foley.
Eleven in Stock Rapids, six of them in Foley. Yep.
Okay, so the question I have, though, is is how did they find out about this program? Does the lender tell them about it?
Correct. Yep.
So, but-
And the realtors, if-
Okay, so, okay, because I was just kind of questioning that. I mean, if with the new program, you know, how are they going to find out?
Do you have this on the BEP website, too?
Yep, we do. And we also had informational webinar. BEP did that right away in the first quarter of 2024. And we invited all of the title companies, the realtors, the lenders to participate in it. And it's a recorded thing, and and our members have access to that, so.
Mr. Chair, Amanda, I know you highlighted a fairly little administrative work.
Yes.
Is there some type of reimbursement to BEP for the time that BEP has put into this?
There's really very, very little, other than me coming to this meeting and delivering the brochures and flyers.
So it is that light-
It is very, it's a very good program for the county to participate.
No doubt.
You've got a little bit more than just bringing the stuff to us, because you got to prepare and-
I mean, this year was a little bit heavier lifting, just because we wanted to get the word out and get the information out there. But other than that, you know, knowing that the lenders know about it, the realtors know about it, the title companies know about it, it's-
You also highlighted it at one of your quarterly meetings.
We did. We actually had a presentation at one of our quarterly meetings as well.
It's a great program.
Great program, and-
It is.
It's a program that if we didn't have BEP, wouldn't exist.
Exactly. That's kind of where I was going with this. It's a little humble over there, which, so. Thank you. All right.
Okay.
Board.
So I am, yeah, go ahead. Just looking for the action.
It's a no-brainer.
Yep, go ahead.
Sure. I'm sorry. I don't even know what the motion is, my computer also.
I have the motion or the action requested is to approve by motion the 2025 MCCP agreement and authorize the execution of the application by the county board chair and the county administrator.
That'll be my motion, Mr. Chair.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion made by Commissioner Heinand and second by Commissioner Pop. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Okay, that's it. I'm done with this.
If you can do that.
Did you get your new computer updated?
Mine is new.
Okay.
He's got mine now.
Mr. Chair, I'll be without my computer.
No problem. You can use mine.
Must have been all the extra stuff that Monte put in it.
And just for the audience, we've been going through this for months now, so.
Yeah. What's that?
The levy and everything, everything, yeah, yeah.
Okay. I'll be there in just a second.
When did we start this? Back in July?
I don't know. Seems like we're going to be starting again in February, right, for the next year?
Okay, let's go a little quicker. Almost there. I should have used best best links. Okay, now we're there. Right, set a 12% levy increase. Here we go. Okay. So Mr. Chair Day's action represents final action on the 2025 budget and levy. You adopted proposed budget levy back in September, and you had a truth and taxation public meeting on December 3rd. If I may, I'd like to use this one pager to give some highlights of the of the final budget levy. If I may. The levy before you is a is a 4.98% increase over 2024. As we mentioned in the truth and taxation public meeting, the statewide average proposed levy by all counties was 6.4%. So just just point of reference, I think that question came up, and we addressed that during the truth and taxation meeting. Our tenure average is 2.7%. We talked about there is a bit of stagnation in our tax capacity for payable 25. Couple reasons, the home state market value exclusion increasing, and also some valuation reductions due to sales data. I think, as Brian mentioned, a lot of that's occurring in Stock Rapids, particularly the northeastern portion of Stock Rapids, where we're seeing some reductions in residential values. And again, that's driven by sales data. So we might see it, we probably will see a small increase in our county tax rate from 44% to 46.5. But I want to quick to point out, we're still down from a high a high of 77.6% in 2014. Major factors behind the levy increase, compensation benefits, that leads off as the largest reason for the increase. There's a 2.5% general wage adjustment, January 1st. Most employees are still receiving step increases, those averaged 3.2%. Moving on down the list, the board chose to use all the certified 2025 county program aid for levy reduction. You can see that that took $583,000 off the levy increase. So new positions, talk about that in a second. We're seeing increased out of home placements in human services, increased cost allocation from Department Corrections for its support of our local probation office here in Foley. The board chose to add a fully insured, that's misspelled, it should say insured, comprehensive dental coverage for employees. We're seeing increased usage of the East Central Juvenile Facility. It's interesting how you see things after you've seen it for like, months. It should say insured, not insured. We're seeing increased usage of the East Central Juvenile Facility, otherwise known as Loudon Lakes. We're seeing increased costs from the University of Minnix. So extension is they had to make, and they needed to make some pay adjustments to attract and retain regional extension educators. That all adds up to about a $1.2 million levy increase for 2025. Some discussion about the new positions, two new detention officers. We heard from Sheriff Heck that all of our posts and the jail need to be staffed 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We were we heard from Sheriff Heck that they had been reducing staffing at night, and the DOC told us that we could no longer do that. Ultimately, I believe the formula says we should add at least about eight detention officers to achieve full staffing of all the posts. As an interim step, Sheriff Heck proposed a five so-called five post jail. That would allow us to, instead of adding eight initially, to add two. Also, the board expresses its its intentions that the SCS position would work full time in the jail. I think, too, the crews are so small right now, there's the jail populations are roughly about 30% of capacity. So you really don't have a lot of folks to work on crews anyway. The board chose to add an environmental technician slash ditch inspector for highway. Of course, you've devoted substantial amount of energy and resources to improving our public ditch system, and you want to make sure that it stays that way. So this will give Chris some much needed assistance to make sure that those ditches are maintained long term. Also, to help navigate the complex environmental permanence associated with road programs. Several positions were added in human services and eligibility specialists, two mensual social workers and two social workers for the what's called the home community-based waiver services. Those are basically for adults, vulnerable adults, elderly who need a service to stay in the home. As human services though point out, is all of these all these positions are off fully offset by revenue. So no levy new levy dollars going into those positions. And then we talked about the, I spelled it correctly there, fully insured dental dental plan for employees. Mr. Chair, I believe that's all I wanted to cover. Again, just some highlights of the of the final budget and levy. And the way the statute works, it asks you to adopt the levy first and then the budget.
Motion to adopt the levy as presented. Second.
Okay, we got a motion in a second to adopt the levy. Any other questions?
Mrs. Chair, I would ask Beth, if you could incorporate into the record this one-page summary, it's in its entirety. Thank you.
Yep.
With the correct spelling.
With the correct spelling.
All right. I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
All right.
Now, we want to adopt the budget. I'll make a motion to adopt the budget. Second. Okay, we got a motion to adopt the 2025 budget. Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries.
All right.
You, everybody, for your work on these, it's it takes a lot of people to come up with this, so.
Mitch, I'd like to chime in on that. That's right. We start the budget process back in June. It is very much a team effort.
Yep.
With all of our departments contributing, folks in the administrator's office, of course, the county board, budget presentations. Yes, it's a long process. It takes a big team. Yep.
Yes. And not everybody gets what they want, and and it there's got to be give and take on all ends, and it's it's tough, especially when you look at a 5% levy increase just on colas and everything like that.
Right. Yep.
But we're not, we're in the same boat as a lot of counties, so. Okay, moving on.
All right. Elected official salaries. So, Mrs. Chair, it's the statutory responsibility of county boards to set the salaries for elected officials. In this in this case, it'd be the sheriff, the audited treasurer, and county attorney. This matter was discussed at a December 2nd committee of the whole. A consensus was reached at that time, and that consensus is reflected in the in the resolution you have in your packet. Also, I included a table which shows historical salaries, requested salaries, and then the board's consensus, final salaries for '25, including the dollar and percentage increases. Again, that's in your packet. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could, I just want to highlight our discussion with committee of the whole about how we talk about our representation from 15 other counties, how employees basically plus or minus 6% increase, had those conversations and tried to bring our elected officials into that same realm, so.
I I concur with what you just said. This gets our elected officials closer to what the what the average is across the board, so. And not only that, I think our elected officials are doing a very good job as well.
Well, and it also highlighted, and no offense, Christine, but the years of service from Sheriff Heck and our county attorney, so.
Yep.
Totally agree.
All right. We got a motion in a second. I'll call the question. I think we had a motion. No, that was the one before. I'll make a motion.
We could have the motion, Mr. Chair.
I'll make a motion to approve the elected salaries.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
All right. Next, Mr. Chair, it is also the statutory responsible of county boards to set the salaries for county boards. This matter was also discussed at December 2nd committee of the whole. It senses reached at that time, and that consensus is reflected in the attached resolution. I should just mention, too, I believe that the consensus were was for the same general wage increase that employees will receive on January 1st.
Thank you for, Mr. Chair, thank you for mentioning that, Monte.
Which is 2.5%.
2.5%, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we set the county board salaries as 2.5% for last year's increase.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion in a second for the commissioner's salary of 2.5% increase. All in favor?
Is it enough?
I don't think anybody's getting rich on it, so.
I thought you could have some info on.
Yeah, no, it it definitely is a, I encourage anybody. So with that, I will call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries. It is a lot of work that I think people mostly think that we just do two meetings. It's way different than that.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to per diem. County boards are eligible to receive a per diem on their service on boards and commissions as authorized by the county board. It was the consensus of the board at the December 2nd committee of the whole to keep the per diem at the current $70 level, and that's reflected in the attached resolution.
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. All right.
I believe my final item is ARPA-related. So really, this is two issues. The first is back, let me think here, let's look at my note. Back in, back in, actually, September '23, the board, by consensus in a committee of the whole, decided to set aside $250,000 of ARPA money for our county fiber project, fiber between our buildings. IT's done a great job of getting that project done. It's it's getting close. There's about $71,000 left in that budget. And of course, you know, we've got this obligation to to make sure the resources are committed by the end of this year. IT was telling me that they were in position to order the remaining equipment and use up the remaining $71,000 by the end of this year. But I said to to Steve, saying, I said, look, you know, in case maybe something doesn't work out as planned, to take a little bit of the pressure off, how about we just ask the board to to pass a motion to commit the remaining $71,000, and then we're good. So somehow, let's just say his order falls through, again, there's some problem between now and the end of the year, you've committed it, and we're good. There's no issue then. So that's really my first thing to ask you is a motion to commit the $71,000, let's see here, the exact number, is $71,322 to commit that to the remaining part of the county fiber project. So again, that that covers Steve. He's good to go. I think he's going to get all the equipment necessary ordered by the end of this year. And I should mention is, when you can show that you've ordered equipment, that satisfies the the requirement to obligate the funds. Another way you can do it is through a board motion to commit. So that takes care of it, too. It's just being a bit obsessive here, but I want to make sure there's no issue about it being committed, obligated by the end of this year. So that's the first part.
So-
County board?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion in a second to, we'll allocate the $71,000 remaining ARPA.
The exact dollar amount is $71,322 to the county fiber project. Yeah.
Yep.
Yep. Yep. Okay. Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. I thought this would be a great time for a quick recap of how the county has used the ARPA funds. As you know, we have the obligation to commit the dollars by the end of this year, and that has been done. That has been accomplished. So this is, my pie chart shows you of our eight, roughly $8 million of ARPA funds, where did it go? Well, 38% went to rural broadband. Of course, we're, hopefully, as Benton Communications has told us, that should be done by the end of next year, where our county will be covered with fiber. That's great news. The second largest area was the city water and sewer projects. Between those two, 75% of our resources went to rural broadband and city water sewer projects. If I, and you can see here the other pieces of the pie, only about 14% really actually went to the county. And that was through the, our revenue losses, and those were true revenue losses in inmate boarding and state aid for roads. We devote the 250 to fiber replacement. And the board actually then puts in additional resources into the contingency budget. About 14% went to county purposes, but then you can see, for example, $500,000 went into the economic development revolving loan fund. $100,000 went to the two-apartment complex improvements in St. Cloud. So, again, I just want, that'd be a good time for a recap, and with the actions you've done today, every penny of those resources are committed, obligated, so we won't be returning any to the federal government.
Remember how nervous you were, Monty, that we might send some back?
Right. We don't want to send any back. That's true.
I know we've said this, sorry, Commissioner. I know we've said this before, but I do commend staff and our board for really putting this money back out in the community. And it wasn't a fight. It was, everybody felt that this money should go out to our communities to keep building our communities, and it was negotiations on both, on all sides to get money out somewhat equally to the population. So I commend our entire board and staff on all of that.
Mr. Chair, I agree, because, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Pop, I agree. I just wish everybody in the county would see this pie chart
Yeah.
of where we put all of our, except for 14%, put all of our ARPA funds.
I mean, and we could have used a large portion of this for revenue losses, and, you know, sure, it would have went back to the citizens because we probably wouldn't have had the levy increases, but we tried to do something for every portion of the county, and I hope the citizens and the cities are appreciative of it.
Yep.
You know, I'd like to see a good appreciation come from them.
Mr. Chair, I also want to make sure I acknowledge the contributions of our townships to the broadband effort. You can see Gilmanton, Glanarado, Langola, Mayhew Lake, Maywood, Minden, Stock Rapids, and St. George combined contributed $140,000 towards our broadband efforts, and we definitely thank them and appreciate their contributions. I see Amanda's still here, and we obviously must thank Amanda, too, for her efforts, because I know she and board members went to these township meetings to secure their contributions, so we greatly appreciate that effort as well.
Yep. She led the charge on all the townships, for sure.
Absolutely.
That's it, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you. We will move on to Chris Byrd. Monty, just for record, we were five minutes ahead until your stuff came up, so now we're 10 minutes behind. I mean, not that anybody's keeping track.
And now I'm double secret probation. Okay.
Oh, no.
Are you expecting me to get us back on schedule?
Yes.
Yep.
I don't last night. No, I think.
I don't think that'll happen.
Well, let's get right into it, then. The first item I have before you is an administrative agreement between Benton County and the City of Foley. So the City of Foley is moving ahead with their street reconstruction projects in 2025. Fourth Avenue, which is our county road 43 north, or, yeah, county road 43 north of Highway 23, but it's also CASA 20 south of Highway 23. I don't know, have to ask those that are around in the 50s why that's a CASA route, but that's when it became established as a CASA route. So, long story short, the city has utilities underneath that roadway that they need to replace. It's prudent for us to reconstruct the roadway over top of that while they're doing that. So the city approved this contract at their last city council meeting. I do want to direct your attention to page two, under costs, just to, so you establish what our costs are. This agreement agrees that the city would basically be the lead on the project. They hired the engineer to do all the engineering work, which we are reviewing when it pertains to our roads. They're going to hold the construction contract. They'll go through a city bid letting and hold the construction contract. And basically, we will reimburse the city for our roadway costs that appear on those monthly payments to the contractor. Additionally, though, this agreement says that we are also agreeing to pay for the engineering costs of that, because they had to do the engineering. We didn't have the staff or resources available to do the engineering. So we're going to reimburse the city for the actual engineering costs to design the roadway of Fourth Avenue, our county road 43. And the rates are kind of established upfront based on percentages. So Exhibit A is the engineer's estimate for the project, and I'll just try to zoom in here if I can. Total costs to the county is estimated about $1.4 million. Of that $1.4 is a little over a million, a million and $48,000 of actual construction costs. They have about 10% in there for a contingency of construction costs, but another $188,000 for engineering and another $52,000 of administration. So we had a recent meeting with the City of Rice where we were expecting, anticipating some reimbursement of administrative fees for their project, but I think this demonstrates when it's the other way, when we have somebody else administering our projects, we're paying, we're acknowledging that we pay a little bit of administration to administer those costs. And quite frankly, this project, the City of Foley, they need to get to it now. We would not have been able to fit a reconstruction of one of our roadways into our five-year plan. And so I think that's why this agreement works best, is the city is important to get to it. Makes sense to reconstruct the roadway over top of their utilities. They're willing to take on that administrative burden, and we're just acknowledging that we'll reimburse them for that, so. Any other questions on that agreement? So, very typical and similar to past agreements that we've had with the City of Foley and City of Stock Rapids, for that matter.
Mr. Chair, I'll move for approval of the administrative agreement with the City of Foley in regards to CASA 43 and CASA 20.
Second?
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
One thing I add, that $1.4 million is in our plan, is coming from wheelage tax, if there's any concerns about that.
Now, consider the IIJA Technical Assistant Grant.
Okay, so we were awarded this technical assistance grant, again, to hire WSB to rework our RACE grant application. So we received a letter saying that we have been approved for the grant amount of $23,628. Now, we need to adopt a resolution and enter into this agreement with MINDOT, so they will actually disperse the funds to us. It's a reimbursement, so we will have to pay the WSB invoices first and then submit that for reimbursement from the state. So although it's not necessarily budgeted for, since it's going to be an in-and-out, we can float that, we can float that cash for that time period where we pay the invoice and then get reimbursement for WSB. So just asking for approval of the adoption of the resolution and approval for board chair signatures on the MINDOT agreement.
I'll move approval of the resolution.
And I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
All right. Okay, this one's going to require a little bit of discussion.
Do we got to do one for the board chair to sign?
What's that?
We don't have to do anything for, okay.
That was included in it.
Good.
Yeah. The next item, this is something we talked about back in November. The City of Stock Rapids is still interested in pursuing a transportation alternatives grant application to get funds to construct a trail along Mayhew Lake Road from Osaka Road up to that unnamed road or what's nicknamed the Water Tower Road. The board asked me to have some additional discussions with the City of Rice about if they construct that trail and it becomes conflicted with the future expansion of Mayhew Lake Road, are they prepared to pay for the relocation costs? My discussions with the city went, to summarize, like this. They hope that the board would exercise some flexibility in the future if that trail needs to be relocated. So not a hard commitment either way. I provided some sketches, additional sketches here. Their engineer is also looking at, could they possibly get some easements from the school district to construct it outside of our right-of-way? If they do that, then they wouldn't need this letter of support. This is what these sketches show, getting a 25-foot trail easement from the school outside of this yellow line, which is the current right-of-way limit of Mayhew Lake Road. I drafted up a letter of support with some suggested language from MINDOT for these applications. But, so that's fully up to the board's discretion. If you're okay with the idea of them putting that trail in our right-of-way, I think our department at a staff level would still require them to acquire a utility permit, which is basically anytime any work is in our right-of-way, we require those to get a permit. We could put some permit language in there that says that you're in our right-of-way by permit. We can revoke that permit at any time due to conflict of the maintenance or reconstruction of the county highway in which you lie. Or, if the board doesn't want to sign a letter of support, it would, in essence, force the city to look at placing that trail outside of existing right-of-way.
Chris, I think this first section from 29 to 3 is closer than what we think, and I would just hate to build a trail and then have to rip it all up with tax mayor, you know, this alternative transportation grant. I mean, we all pay for this stuff, and it's stupid to take and build something that could be tore up.
Mr. Chair, Chris, just for clarification, even if they got the 25-foot easement from the school district, is that even far enough away from a potential future upgrade to CASA 1? Because you're looking, what's our right-of-way now?
It's about 75 feet on either side.
Okay.
So I think it would be our goal to construct as much as we can within the existing road right-of-way. My concern would be at this intersection, and then later, the next item, we'll see why. Roundabouts, inevitably, you end up needing corners at the intersection just to build that circle. You're trying to fit a circle, a round peg into a square hole when it comes to roundabouts. So that's my biggest concern at these locations.
Can't we have further dialogue with them on, especially those points of interest? So we can have them figure out an alternative area, because I think those roundabouts are coming quicker than we think.
And that's, the timing, I guess, is the big question. I think the grant application they're applying for is for fiscal year '29. So if you get the grant, you know, the funds aren't available to '29, so that's four years out, which a lot of times takes the engineering and environmental review to do that. Would we be constructing roundabouts or before that timeframe? I think that's the big unknown, that like, which comes first? It's the chicken or the egg thing. But when I look at this intersection, I still, we don't have enough engineering completed to know, look at these houses.
Yeah.
That we can't encroach there, so that forces the roundabout circle to the east.
Go east.
And then how much are we acquiring over here? How much?
This is going to be a partnership with the school, the city, and the county, all the way through, whether it's the trail or the road, so.
And I think.
We know the school's got big plans.
Yeah.
That's going to be on the ballot in February to build a lot of features on this property here in the next two to three years, so.
So.
Go ahead.
No, I'll let you go this time.
So I think we might as well start having the conversation with the, or force the conversation for the city and the school to have this conversation now
Yeah.
on this trail. I am not in favor of invent, in bargaining on any of our right-aways on this road, because it'll come back to cost us money.
Correct. So, Chris, you threw out two alternatives to add to this, and what was, please tell me both those alternatives you were just talking about.
If you would like to be supportive of them submitting a grant, you could authorize or approve this letter, and then still direct us to grant them a permit. And then we could put some permit language in there that they are in our road right-of-way by permit. And then if they need to relocate it because it's in conflict of our maintenance and reconstruction of our roadway, just like any other utility, it's on them to do that at their costs.
Correct.
Or we could just not say, "We're not supportive of it being in our right-of-way." Then we don't have to do anything else. Then that would.
The problem is.
Not even to write up their grant application saying that they need to acquire additional easements from the school property and put it outside of our road right-of-way.
The problem with that is then they wouldn't be able to get in for the 2029 grant. They wouldn't have enough time to get all that.
Well, I mean, I'm very much in favor of the second location, because if the school goes ahead and that passes, they're going to re-figure some of this stuff, and they need to make sure that property's available to them now, not after the project is done.
Yep.
So, I mean, there is no way I want that trail in our right-of-way whatsoever.
Well, if we built the road, the future road, like, that's kind of been designed, would that work in our right-of-way?
Possibly. I don't know. We don't have enough in. What came out of that corridor study is some high-level concepts. You know, basically, were you looking at two dimensions? What happens when you put it on the ground level that's actually out there? That's when things, you got to get through quite a ways into engineering to say, "Oh, the ground's a lot higher here. We got to go chase that slope back." All of a sudden, we're outside of our existing right-of-way to get the ground to tie in and match up again.
Well, Mr. Chair, that's the problem, even with a 25-foot off from the school district, is that may not be enough.
And there is, let's just treat the city as like any other utility within the road right-of-way, and use our recent example with Excel. When it's, there are some risks there, too. When it's right outside of our right-of-way and we impact it, then generally, we are on the hook for those costs because they were in their own easement. So there's risks both ways. Which way is best to minimize our risk or cost risk in the future?
I do believe that they would fare very well in this transportation, or this alternate, yeah, I do. I think they could get the money.
I agree with you on that. It's just, you know, what kind of language can we put in there so that we don't have to replace it?
The only thing I would say on that is we've worked with a few of these at the APO, and they are out to '29. So if you look at it, there's a lot of things that change in four years. And, you know what I mean? So we could technically support that, but if all of a sudden that RACE grant comes through or something like that on that first leg, they can still get that grant. Now it's just reconfiguring their trail to go, because I believe that's part of the RACE grant, is if something like this was going in, that actually votes better
Benefits us.
to get that RACE grant.
Does, yep.
Yeah, and I had, that's another topic, but we had those recent discussions with WSB when we're talking about our cost for our project. We were looking at ways to minimize our costs. You're right, having pedestrian features meets more of those environmental justice kind of things requirements, but it isn't added cost to the project. Do we show, do we take that out and say, "Okay, we're low on our project costs, or our benefit cost ratio looks better," but we also took away some of the benefits, too.
Yeah. And technically, we can apply for this, because we wouldn't be awarded it before we apply for the RACE grant. So there's a chance that you could potentially get both because of the timing, if you will.
You're right. So we have one more board meeting. The first board meeting in January occurs before this grant application is due. The RACE grant actually due at the end of January. Those transportation alternatives, they usually make that announcement, I believe, in the spring. It might be April time.
Yep.
We may not know our RACE grant until June, so, yeah.
I agree with Commissioner Pop. The only thing is, is I think if we supported this, there's time for that, for, to reconfigure. Because they don't have to, they don't have to get all of their easements right now. They could still work on easements and slide that over 20 feet, or, you know.
But I'm afraid if we support it, that they can use our easements. That's the way it's going to, that's the way it'll come down.
I think we still got to do the, they got to do the fees, and we got to put some. I think we still gotta do the, they gotta do the fees and we gotta put some language in there and stuff like that.
To Commissioner Pop's point, if, if we do offer the letter of support that says that we're okay with it being in the road right of way. That's how their grant application will be written up and if they get the grant, it'll be expected to still do what the grant application said, but in the road right of way.
Do you have any indication if the school district's willing to work with them on the twenty-five foot easement?
Uh, I do not, um.
I concern is those two fields right there.
That's in the ball field, so how long, what's the distance?
Then you're going back to the, if the school district gets their athletic complex, they may have money to do that. And if we put it in our right of way, then they don't have to. You know, we can, we can force the city and force the school district to do it the right way. By, by staying out of our right of way. Especially when we know there's something coming.
Right. Yeah, my, my, my real concern on this is, do we have enough room to do the road the right way? If we get the raise grant without acquiring more easement that would be.
Well.
Efficient, effectively.
If they got the easement from the school, is that even far?
Is that even far?
Might still be tearing it up.
Now. Is there a way to have more communication with Sauk Rapids even if Commissioner Heinen and myself?
Well, uh, I do know we have a, a meeting, the city did request a meeting, uh, sooner than later, I just sent out a meeting invite for Monday. They want to talk about specifically twenty-nine in one roundabout, the status of that, it may be a good. Time to open up the conversation about other projects. I, I think it makes sense.
Yeah, it's Monday morning.
You know. It may even make sense before we get too far along to even get into an administrative agreement with the city of Sauk Rapids to. I mean, we're, we're all partners, we're all good neighbors of each other, it's nice to have something in writing to remind. Each other who, what our roles and responsibilities are on these, these mega projects, I mean, this would be a mega project for Benton County or Sauk Rapids.
Do you know if, uh, Superintendent Bergstrom is going to be there?
I do not, I, I think, I think they are very, a very important partner as well. Um, part of the reason we got. You know, our earmark was because we talked about the, the, the new. Athletic facility going on up the north here, so, I mean, it's all, the, we're all tied together, we're all. I keep wanting to say we're all in bed together, but, um, we, we, we're all. We're all, we're all interacting with each other, we're, we're creating things that drive traffic and we're trying to address existing safety issues, um.
I have confidence in you guys having a discussion.
I think we addressed this on, we addressed this on Monday right of way and, and come to a conclusion.
Yeah, and I, and I think between the three jurisdictions, we should be able to come. Well, a couple of things I think we should bring to that is the school should give the footage from the ball field. To, to the right of way.
Yep.
And figure out if, what that, what that is because if. If, if there's a way that we can do it that way. That would be the best way to do it because we can't affect that road, there's gotta be change, there was another bad accident yesterday morning out there. On, on that roundabout that we're changing, a three car.
And the other part, if you look at, school district's gonna need votes, they're probably willing to come to the table sooner than later. Before February eleventh. In order to get passed what they want passed, so, I mean, everybody's. Kind of in the same boat.
And Superintendent Bergstrom's been hugely on board with this fixing this issue.
Until you want to take his ball fields away.
Oh, I, I, I don't, I think we can still make it work, but.
One of my concerns, I'll just point out, does anybody see this shadow here?
Yep.
So, uh, that's our friend Excel. Nope. Where any widening or expansion. Does that force it this, this direction and not that way, so there's still a lot of unknowns to get into, any hard commitments at this point, so.
I would say let's table this until we have our meeting because we can, we can still get it in the first meeting in, in January to meet their deadline, correct?
Yes, yes, uh, the, the grant application I think, uh, is due January tenth, and our meeting is the sixth. Seventh.
Seven.
Okay, so if we do it when we would, I mean, if we want to do it, then we still have a couple of days to get it to them.
The, the problem is that gonna put them in a bind if.
I don't know, maybe, but.
Can.
It doesn't seem like we're ready to commit right now and I, I don't think we should feel pressured to commit one way, uh, or another, so.
Mister Chair, I move to postpone this decision until the first meeting in January.
Yeah, it's a big decision.
I have a question though.
Well, I'll, I'll second that, just.
You don't need a second for a table.
No, you don't.
Okay, wow.
I just wanted to make sure the, my only question, Chris, is when we go to our meeting Monday morning with the city. I want you to bring, uh, documentation of our plan for that road, of how it's going to impede and how wide. It's going to be for our right of way and everything, so that we have an understanding, you know, you said we've got seventy-five feet, are we going to need a hundred of it? We need to know that for our new system of road if we get the raise grant.
Cause, cause I'm, I'm, I'm going to tell you, if we built, if we got this, this, uh, trail money or they got this money. And then they put it in and then a year later we tear it all out.
Yeah.
Though we're gonna all get mutilated in the public eye.
Totally.
Yeah, we should, yeah, that's why we're having this conversation.
That's right.
Yeah, we're not saying we're not going to support it, we're gonna say that we need to have more communication.
And maybe that's, at the end of the day, it's just like now's not the right time.
Yeah. Cause we put a lot of money and they, they.
That's correct.
They actually put in a third of that money for that study.
Yep.
Yes, you're right, you're right, yeah, mm-hmm.
Wasn't there a trail on that study too?
There was, yeah, I think the, some of the concepts did show trails. On one or both sides of the roadway too, so maybe that's a compromise, it's like, okay, we can fit one of them in, but we're not going to be able to fit. Both on both sides of the roadway.
So it's going to be a trail on one side and sidewalk on the other.
Yep. Okay, we'll table that till the next meeting.
All right, uh, the last thing, uh, for your attention, uh, is approval of the road right of way plat number sixteen. And this is the plat at one and twenty-nine that establishes the limits of the new right of way we're acquiring. Uh, earlier I mentioned trying to fit a, a round peg in a square hole and that's, that's kind of demonstrated here, so. You see Mayhew Lake Road, our Kasaw One north-south here, Kasaw Twenty-Nine east-west. These lines represent the existing road right of way. Um, and then here's the new proposed right of way limits, kind of these triangles that are needed, uh, at all four quadrants. This one's, uh, uh, larger than the other four. Because we're, we're, we need to put our stormwater treatment ponds in this corner, so that's why that corner looks a little bit larger than the other three corners. Uh, for additional road right of way, so. That's where the term we have a lot, existing right of way generally applies a lot of times, but then you get into engineering and you see your elevations and you realize, okay, your grading limits extend past. Oh yeah, we need to treat our stormwater that runs off of our project and you need additional road right of way, so. Approving this and recording this plat then becomes the legal description of those parcels. Uh, in any purchase agreements that, that we enter into later. Okay, questions?
Move for approval of right of way plat number sixteen as presented.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries.
All right, and I have the plat with me, I'll leave here for signatures after the meeting.
Well, it's another couple.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. Anything else or I'll step aside for keep the meeting going?
I think we're good, thank you, Chris. We're gonna run into Commissioner, we're gonna, we're gonna finish up the, 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 uh, um, board meeting real quick. With this being Commissioner Schlongian's last board meeting, we'll let her start with Commissioner updates. Unless we end up having a, uh, special one for some reason. You don't see that coming, do you, Monty?
What's that?
Special board meeting? Okay, good.
Maybe.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Something with BAP maybe. That's kind of. I, yeah. Commissioner Heinen?
Okay, I'll, I'll start, so I had, we had the, uh. Benton County Oprah development committee, that was interesting, then I did the, uh. CLA meeting audit with the audit firm. Uh, also I had a Sauk Rapids joint power meeting that I attended on behalf of Benton County. Let's see, AMC conference, very good conference this year. Uh, what else, I had the, uh. Extend, extension twenty-nine meeting, PMT meeting yesterday. And that's all, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Schlongian?
Oh, I got a lot more, I guess, holy crips, go ahead.
No, finish up.
No, I'm fine, I'm fine, we're good.
Commissioner Schlongian?
Hey, we had, um, the AMC conference. Industrial products tour of the facility. One other one. The wastewater, um, recognition by the.
For Foley.
I, I think that was it.
Okay. Commissioner Johnson?
Right, so on December third, Commissioner Pop and I met with Chris on a Ditch Subcommittee meeting. Um, had discussions in regard to CD six and CD four and a few other options on CD nine and fourteen. On December fifth, they had our final policy committee meeting with the One Water One Plan for St. Cloud, so that project's moving forward. Of course, there are AMC conferences, uh, Roxanne touched base about our planning commission meeting last week, we moved that forward for that ordinance today. Uh, then I'll, the next day I also had a Tri-County Solid Waste Executive Board meeting. Uh, reviewing bylaws and some other procedures moving forward, um, and then I also attended the St. Cloud Industrial Production Site, it was a good tour, thank you for the invite to that, by the way, Amanda. That's all I had, thank you.
Um, well, of course, we had the AMC conference and just, uh. Like to congratulate Commissioner Kapinski for being Public Safety Chair, so we. You know, Benton County's still got a seat on the AMC board and I think, thanks for the update, because we, you learn a lot being on there and counties. Represented makes a big difference. Um, and then I went to the wastewater deal, it was really. Uh, heartfelt to see. How much Foley appreciated everything we did for them to get that rolling and get it done. Um, you know, you go to these things, you like to see that, that, you know, they recognize, well, you, the county really did a lot. And then we had MICA, we had MICA meeting, we finished setting the policies, they're all online if you want to, you know, for this year. And then we had MICA again on Friday and we got our, uh, executive director down to six and we're gonna be, gonna be doing an in-person interview this Friday. Hopefully we get one, I think candidates were really good, we had thirteen of them to choose from, so.
That's awesome.
Yeah, that was really good, um, and that's all that I had, well, then last night me and Chris were at the. City of Rice City Council meetings, uh, you know, they beat us up a little bit, right, Chris, but we were. Kind of, kind of used to, they want a little more communication and I don't know. How we're gonna really do that, I thought we were communicating quite well. Um, just on different things and it goes back to the two to three percent administrative fee.
Yeah. All right, uh, with that, uh, Medical Services Board, um, nothing much there, I got the emergencies radio board tomorrow. Uh, sounds like everybody from AMC is getting COVID, so. Sounds, sounds like most of the people are going to be doing remotely, so. Um, uh, as Commissioner Pop did say that I did. Uh, I wouldn't say lucky enough to get the board chair for public safety, but I'll have that for two years, I thank Commissioner Pop. For doing, uh, the, the Environmental Natural Resources Board for, uh, the last two years, so. Yeah, between all the, all the different stuff Benton County's had going for the last few years, it's, it's good representation there, so. That's really all I have for meeting updates, we did not have an APO meeting and a few of the other ones, uh, we didn't have any agenda items either, so. Okay, uh, we'll move on to Commissioner, uh, comments, I've got one comment on that and I, I know that we're going to be talking about it. In next, next month is the Airport Authority. I know that talking with other counties, I'm sure you guys have too, we need to keep this in the forefront and. We got to be very careful on, on how this moves forward, so, uh. Uh, you know, I, I know that, uh, there was a, there was a, a board that questioned whether they wanted to even appoint. People to, to that if this is the way it was gonna be ran.
Mister Chair, maybe if I could add on to that, Monty, if it's reasonable with the rest of the board, maybe we could see a copy of that original agreement sent out to us electronically so we can review that before we have our discussion? That'd be great.
Yeah. Yeah, I know, uh, I know one of the communications that came out was the. Uh, executive board had two representatives that had to come and talk, so. You know, I, I don't, I believe our representatives can come and talk to us at any time and they should.
I agree.
So, all right, that's all I had on that. Um, committee as a whole.
Okay, Mister Chair, here we go. The swearing in ceremony will be, uh, eight AM, January seventh. Eight AM, January seventh, so promptly at eight, we'll have Judge, uh, Robert Ralp here for swearing in. Uh, for Commissioner Kapinski. Commissioner Johnson. Um, and Commissioner-elect Pam Benoit. Uh, after that, we'll have a photographer here for group and individual pictures, so consider that as you.
Doll up.
All right, I thought we should also get on the calendar, your next meeting with GLT and Contagility, uh. We left that unresolved at the last meeting, they need to have conversations with, uh, Excel, so they kind of left it, you all to pick a date. Uh, to meet with them again, Pete and Evan. So thinking probably.
I thought it was gonna be end of January because they had to wait until those numbers or until the design came back.
You know, that's the last conversation I had with Evan is really it's, it's, it's kind of in your court now to set a date, but you're right, it should be probably second half of January, not early January, no.
Maybe we could set that one, the seventh.
Thirteenth through the twentieth?
Hmm?
The thirteenth or the twentieth, thirteenth too early?
I thought they needed most of them, just talking with GLT down there, I thought they needed most, well, you know what? Why don't we look at our calendar?
We'd be closed the twentieth, that's MLK Day.
Just an FYI, I'm on vacation the nineteenth through the February first. Last two weeks of, uh, December.
So the week of the twenty-seventh?
But you guys can go ahead and have those meetings, that's fine.
Someplace in there is. The ditch conference or is that the first part of February?
That's first part of February.
February.
Twenty-seventh, but Commissioner Heinen, you'll be gone?
Drainage Conference is the fifth and sixth of February, right?
Fridays are really tough for me.
Yeah, that was the other thing I'd like to. This is Mondays.
I'd like to eliminate.
Oh, I'm in December, nevermind, thank you.
The twentieth because you're closed, right?
That's MLK Day, yep, we're closed, right?
I didn't know I had a day off.
Uh, Commissioner Johnson, you do not.
Okay. And I looks like the twenty-seventh of.
The twenty-seventh, twenty-seventh, okay.
Let's, let's put that down. If for some reason we could move it, i- i- if for some reason they say. That the thirteenth would work, would that work for all you guys?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Would that work for you?
Thirteenth?
Yeah.
So how should I portray this, is thirteenth the preferred date?
Twenty-seventh.
Or the twenty-seventh the preferred date?
Well, it really is gonna go by what they have.
If they're ready, I'd say.
I'd say the thirteenth, yeah.
Okay, so thirteenth if ready, got it, okay. I'd like then add some content to this committee, also. In the past, you've used the committee of the whole to discuss the appointments to boards and commissions. Instead of just doing that, usually historically it used to be you do that first board meeting of the year. The last few years you've instead discussed it, a committee of the whole first. So I'll leave it to you, do you want to continue discussing that at Cal first and then have it adopted?
Yeah, I do, I'd rather have it at a Cal.
Okay, so could we include that with either the thirteenth or twenty-seventh?
Okay, no, no, stop right there. I can't do it the twenty-seventh, I think we backed up, I'm on vacation the last two weekends of January.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I, I missed it, okay.
If we, if we can have it on the thirteenth, we'd put it on that.
Okay, so I will just really stress that we gotta make it work with Evan on the thirteenth then, so that would be then, that's the preferred date. So boards and commission discussion as well. Uh, I was also asked to, to get scheduled earlier rather than later, your, uh, annual discussion about county goal, county board goals. So the issue is, do you want to go ahead and schedule that today or, or sometime later? Cause it seems like it's, it's not happened till we get.
If we don't schedule it, it's gonna be later.
It gets into, you know, March or so, so.
We don't want to go to March, but early February.
What is the, what is the fourteenth or fifteenth of January look like?
Well. Or as far as I'm concerned, you need to tie it to the same day on the thirteenth.
Tie it everything together, tie up Monday and be done with it.
I'm, great, that's fine.
Usually when we did Board, we do off-site though, when we do goal setting.
Sure, but we can go nine to eleven on the Cal and then eleven to whatever on the goal.
So, uh, they said, uh, are, are we back on the thirteenth for this?
Thirteenth.
Okay, so I'm hearing you maybe wanted to try and knock out all these issues on the same day. So, uh, it would be GLT, Contagity, and then Boards and Commissions, and then Goal Setting later.
You consider starting at eight?
Did I hear, did I hear you say you'd want to like have the Goal Setting part off-site?
Yes.
To like, uh, recess, travel to some other destination?
Jack and Jim's.
Or wherever.
Lunch, okay, got it. Okay, I have one last one, back to the Airport Authority. So, was contacted Bill, Bill Towel, and he requested having a meeting between yourselves and members of the Airport Authority, including our two appointed representatives sometime in the second half of January. So, um, he said if we could avoid Thursdays?
And Fridays.
And Fridays?
And Fridays.
This case, the second, unless, uh, second half of January, Commissioner Heinen's gonna be gone.
You know.
So that, and that's fine, you know, how about we, we can push it into February then? That was just kind of a goal, was trying to have it by the second half of January, but we could push it into February.
We could, we could push it into the first part of February, but I think it's very important because I think there, yeah, I, I think it's very important we get this figured out on what we can do.
Looking at that February, then, February third.
If it works for you guys, you know, the end of January, that's fine. I have no issues with that.
No, you should probably be there.
I think the five of us need to be there.
The other part is that maybe we push it off into February, maybe they'll meet with the other three counties prior to.
Oh, I like that idea.
How about February?
Let them get beat up first, sir.
How about February eleventh or the seventeenth? We can't, Monday, we have Quad County.
We're closing the seventeenth, that is, uh, President's Day.
Another day. I got another day off, Jared.
I don't technically do, but they do.
How about February eleventh, Tuesday the eleventh?
If we did it right away in the morning.
February eleventh? What time roughly, nine?
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty?
Eight thirty, okay.
You guys are lucky I sold my cows.
And, and again, uh, Bill has assured me that they, they plan to have an attendance, our two appointees, uh, to the Airport Authority.
Yeah, they'll have to see if that's gonna work for them, because.
That's gonna be here?
Yes, yes, here. So just a quick recap against wearing in ceremony, January seventh at AM. On the thirteenth, we're gonna have the Government Center Discussion, discussion of County Board Appointments to Boards and Commissions, and County Board Goal Setting. And we'll, we'll have that portion, uh, kind of over lunch at Jack and Jim's. Uh, unless that changes, we'll let you know, but we'll assume that'll work for them. Usually, they can give us that back room.
Sure.
That back area. Mr. Chair, that, oh, wait a second, there's a yellow envelope here in front of me. Oh, please get on your calendars, the MICA, um, Annual Legislative Forum. It is Thursday, January thirtieth, in Prior Lake, the Wild Golf Club. You know, they're asking, they're asking for RSVPs by January sixteenth. Are, are anyone in, in position to tell us that you want to go?
As of now, I'm planning on it.
Yep, I'm.
To take a note back.
Isn't that where we went to Ladina last time?
This isn't.
Winona.
We went down to Winona.
It starts at two PM.
Right.
Begins at two PM and concludes with dinner at seven. Others?
No, I, um.
I, I might be able to, I, I'll plan on it.
We're forgetting Commissioner-elect there.
Okay, okay. So again, that's, uh, hosted by Scott County, January thirtieth, the Wild Golf Club.
Maybe they'll have their issues all figured out.
Just kidding.
Maybe they'll have the new election by then, right?
Yeah. And also, if we could, uh, the Drainage Conference is February, it says fourth, but, uh, it, it really doesn't start until the fifth. There's like a welcome deal.
Yeah, on the fourth at night.
Should we go ahead and put the fourth?
Yeah.
Okay, the, it's February fourth to the sixth at Arrowood and Alexandria.
Yes.
From my standpoint, I'm so grateful we have two Commissioners that have taken that on.
Exactly.
So, is there any indication of who's gonna go to that by chance?
I'm planning on it.
So the Art Commissioners, Pop, Johnson? See, I, lots, lots of finger pointing going on there.
Benoit, are you going to attend?
That might be.
That would be a very good conference to attend.
Be a good one for you, yeah.
If you can.
The Drainage Conference? Yeah, it's at Arrowood, Alexandria.
There's evening, there's like a welcome reception that evening, but it really doesn't start until that morning.
That's right.
I think it starts right in early at eight, right, I believe?
Well, well-attended the last few years.
What is that, February fourth?
Yes, fifth and sixth.
Fourth and the sixth.
Fourth in the evening, really, but doesn't fire up till Wednesday morning. Ends on Thursday noon, right?
Ice fishing.
That's Wednesday the fourth, it starts.
Tuesday the fourth.
And then the fifth, and it ends at noon on the sixth, yeah.
Okay, yep.
Okay, I have to back up here. So the thirteenth, is that when we're gonna do our, uh, Goal, Goal Settings, Committee of the Whole, and set our appointments?
Yep.
Okay.
You know, I don't know, I don't know, we actually set a start time on that.
Well, don't matter, but I have meetings already that first week of January.
I know, that's always been a problem, we don't do it at the, I think you continue.
Well, my, my opinion is, is the appointment continues until it's changed.
Yeah.
And you just.
Here's the problem.
You could be elected Chair.
Well, I'm gonna, it don't matter, but I will need another appointee, because Commissioner Schlangen will be gone, because of his career solutions.
We may just have to have a.
There's two, there's two, or is it an alternate?
Two, two.
With no alternate, right now?
Well, we can have an alternate, but there is no alternate right now.
Well, if there's, is there gonna be a quorum problem, maybe?
Yes, there is, because there's only, because it's a Joint Powers Board with two from Sterns and two from Benton, okay? And we need three there, and we've been having issues.
Yeah.
Beth, do you know who is the alternate? Because I think we did place an alternate.
It's on that shared drive, though.
I'm pretty sure it's Commissioner Kapinski.
Give us a second.
I think it is.
But I'm gonna run into problems, because I got APO.
Oh, no, you don't, because we started at three o'clock, and Joe's on the Board, and we get everything done by four, so that.
You can go to APO.
Yeah.
See how that works?
And it's at the tech, and it's at the, it's at the tech college.
It's so similar to the, um, Drainage Conference stuff. It's really right in there.
It really, when is this? This is the sixth?
It's the ninth.
I will be, oh, well, I will be out of town.
I got a, I got an idea.
Commissioner Kapinski is there.
I know.
The ninth.
No, can't we appoint her at our January?
That's our fishing, ice fishing deal. Commissioner Kapinski, you are the alternate on Career Solutions.
Okay, so that won't work.
We can do it as a special, why don't we just do a special?
Appointment.
Appointment on our January seventh Board Meeting to Career Solutions.
Yes, that, thank you.
Yeah.
That's what I would appreciate, just so you know, yeah.
Guess whose name might come rise to the top?
And we could actually make that right now, too, if we wanted to.
Yeah, she's not sworn in yet.
No, she's not appointed, I mean, she's not, uh.
How about we just have that on your January seventh?
Yeah, that'd be good.
Thank you.
All right. We good then, Monty?
We're good.
All right. Motion to approve the cause is presented.
One, one point of question, though, we didn't set a start time for the January thirteenth.
Eight thirty.
Yeah, I got, I've got it at eight thirty.
Eight thirty, okay, got it.
There might be an orderly annexation on the first Tuesday.
With?
They're, they usually cancel.
With who?
Minden.
Minden, on the alternate anyway, I can go to it.
Okay.
Okay.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, both same side. Motion carries. Monty?
We still got a lot to do.
Yeah, they ain't got anything, dude.
Okay, all right. It's the final Board meeting, Commissioner Schlangen.
And I thought we should recognize Commissioner Schlangen for her service on the Benton County Board of Commissioners. Uh, Commissioner Schlangen, thank you very much for your four years of dedication to Benton County. You know, I know sometimes, uh, it's interesting, there's sort of like the impression that, well, you all just meet twice, twice a month, isn't that it? You know, that's probably all you do. I wanted to just cover, if I could, a few things that where Commissioner Schlangen has represented you the past four years. Uh, you've been the primary or co-appointed to Career Solutions, the Central Minnesota Home Visiting Coalition Board, the Minden Township City-St. Cloud Order Annexation Joint Powers Board, the AMC Joint Government Policy Committee, the Central Minnesota Council on Aging Board of Directors, the Greater St. Cloud Development Corporation, the Transportation Alliance, RSVP, uh, TRICAP program, and you've been the alternate on various other boards and commissions. I also kind of went back through my calendar and counted up, you had twenty, so far this year, you've had twenty-three Committees of the Whole here on site. You know, and that's a kind of a insider term we use, it's really a work session, so the average is about two a month. You've had Committees of the Whole to talk about the building and highway and all the various issues, in addition to your two Board Meetings a month. So you average about two Committees of the Whole, uh, a month as well. Uh, of course, there's conferences, AMC Conference, Paul Policy, Fall Policy Conference, the Drainage Conference. So there's, it's a substantial kind of commitment, I know, and I, I don't think a lot of folks really, really understand that of all the time that you all put in outside these meetings that happen twice a month. So Commissioner Schlangen, we definitely thank you, appreciate your service. I appreciate your investment of time and energy into serving the residents of Benton County, especially your District Commissioner Five. Uh, thank you for your service, and we have a small token of our appreciation we'd like to present to you, and if you could.
I have to take this out of the box. All right, there we go. Presented to Commissioner Schlangen appreciation for four years of loyal distinguished service to Benton County, two thousand twenty-one to twenty-five.
Covers on.
Nope.
Like, I can see them.
I needed to get up anyway.
Big smile, there we go, one, three, one, two, three. Thank you.
I might do the same thing.
One more?
I gotta run to the restroom before we start.
Perfect, thank you.
I'm gonna suggest we don't even adjourn, so you can't do those.
Tim, you wanna take a picture of this, too?
Oh, boy.
All right. Uh, any other business in front of the County Board?
No, sir.
All right, we are going to adjourn at eleven nineteen, and I'm gonna turn it over to Commissioner Heinen for Community Health Board.
Can we have a two-minute break?
Okay, go ahead. We'll have a two-minute break, or up to.
Up to. The gavel hits in two minutes. They're sticking around for ditch authority? Come on.
Oh, this is Steve Heinen. Thanks, Tim. Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Tim. You can have them all or pull them. It's either that or they put them down, so it's, I mean, he's, he's like right there. Just make sure they're giving you the right injection.
Want me to give you those right away?
Oh, thank you.
That are not signed right now. Oh, boy. Beth, I really appreciate you right now. I know it's not you.
It took me almost two hours to go through all of those to find all the, all the spots assigned, so.
I'm done.
Yeah, I have an addition, and then, um, real small, I just have a couple of thank yous I want to do as well.
Okay.
Move, move approval?
Second.
The addition.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Consent agenda item one through four, what we would like to do with that?
Move for approval, Mr. Chair?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you. Okay, next. Request to submit an interest form. Go ahead, Jaclyn, please.
Yeah, so, just reaching out, so annually, we complete our congratulate and educate checks with our tobacco retailers. We do this every year. Um, so just want to, um, request the approval for us to submit an interest form to DHS to get a small amount of reimbursement back for completing the congratulate and educate checks. The Sheriff's Office still does the compliance checks, but we work in conjunction, um, a really good working relationship with our Sheriff's Office. They do the compliance piece, and then Public Health is doing the congratulate and educate. Um, so just an opportunity for us to redeem some funds back for that work.
And have we done this last year, too, Jaclyn?
Yeah, we, we try to apply every single year.
Correct.
Um, and the other benefit to us applying is it gives us the curriculum, um, and educational items as well through that contract, so.
Okay.
Small amount of reimbursement, but there's a lot of big wins for us and not having to create materials.
Mr. Chair, Jaclyn, so it's a fifty-dollar, uh, CNE check that goes out, what's the reimbursement?
It's a reimbursement of fifty dollars for each that we complete.
And what's the cost of the ones you complete?
Uh, staff time primarily, so it's mostly our staff, yeah, staff time, um, and then we do have some individuals that we, um, work with, and so it's paying for their time as well.
Approximately, how many you plan on receiving?
Typically, we do between, I think we, we're at ten right now, so we probably have, yeah, about five hundred bucks.
So you're gonna get about five hundred bucks?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Move for approval, Mr. Chair?
Second.
Great, we got a motion and a second, any further discussion on that item? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you. Jaclyn?
Yeah, so a couple of quick things, um, just wanted to do a couple of quick thank yous. Um, a big shout out to our WIC department, so I don't know, um, last week, um, we had some issues with the plumbing, um, as you guys may have heard, with the bathrooms and the human service area. So I just wanted to commend our WIC staff. They did a lot of pivoting. Um, it, it impacted our WIC lab, which is where they do their, um, height weight and hemoglobin checks for all the individuals coming in for their clinical appointments. And so, as you can imagine, the public coming in, um, with the sewage issues, um, and the backups and overflow, as they, they were doing a lot of the rotor-ruder work, uh, it sounds like, in our WIC lab. So they had to leave, vacate that space and move into a conference room, um, and they set up shop, they didn't have any interruption to our WIC clients, and so just want to commend them for pivoting and working hard through those challenges, um, and then spent time, of course, cleaning up, um, the conference room space and disinfecting that before they moved back into the WIC clinic, so. Um, and then also, just a big thank you to property management, they, they were swift with that as well. Um, I know Cory was in our WIC lab, um, doing a lot of disinfecting in that space as well.
Am I the only one that sees an issue with this moving forward?
Yes.
Yep. 'Cause how do we do this every year?
Mm-hmm.
We can't.
I do believe that, talking to a few people that live in some of these ditches, I do believe we're gonna have people, and I don't know if they gotta be licensed bonded and everything else, that are gonna come forth and say, at a hundred and ninety bucks, I will go out there and do that, and we supervise it. This is an outrageous rate, a hundred and ninety bucks, for what, the equipment that they're gonna use.
Do, do we got any other bids?
No.
We did receive two quotes, when I put it out there for quotes, we got this Pioneer Tree Service that was three hundred and fifteen dollars an hour.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
It's like, oh, my God.
What, I mean, and I get your point, but where are we gonna draw the line with having individuals going out mowing buffer strips?
I mean, that's ideal, if they would do that.
Sure, I mean, that's a long-term plan, once it's established.
Yeah.
But we got some issues there. If A is gonna go out and mow them, and he's to do the whole ditch, ditch, ditch B is gonna say, well, why is he doing mine?
Mm-hmm.
Right?
I'm not following you, sorry.
Well, if ditch A lives on the, ditch, person A lives on the ditch.
Yep.
And he says, I'll mow the whole thing for X number of dollars, or seventy-five hundred, and then B comes along and says, well, I own land and that, how come he's getting paid?
He gets some of it?
Yeah. So, I don't know, but I'm, this is outrageous price, I, I don't think, has anybody been out there to look how much percentage of that needs to be mowed?
I've been out there, I haven't done the whole length of the ditch, but what I can see, everything that I saw needed to be mowed. The only place that I can think of is the branch on County, County Road forty, fifty-one, the one landowner mowed the one side of it, but the north side of the ditch had not been, been mowed, so.
County fifty-one?
Uh, yeah, it would be Bo Camp.
Sixty-one.
Is it sixty-one? Yeah.
Well, what's their name, it's made, Patchex, they made all the hay down around their ditch, I've seen that.
But did they do the buffer?
Yes, they made right up to the ditch.
Okay.
You know, because they make that whole metal.
Again, there's no credit for that, though.
No, they, but they, they got the hay.
Yeah, well, that is kind of the long-term plan.
Right.
I'm a little torn, because it needs to be done, and I understand the cost of it, and I understand there's gonna be costs to establish the buffer, the buffer's not established yet.
On CD six?
Well, I mean, it's established, but it's not the spot where it should be. They can go out and just mow.
I, I, Mr. Chair, I think we've come to the conclusion that it was gonna be two years of somehow us mowing that till it got established, you know, and then hopefully the landowners would take over it.
I wonder how confident Luke is in the estimate of hours?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, he seems to be very confident, 'cause this is the one, remember, we change-ordered in to do the, the next, the other side.
Other side, yeah.
I wasn't originally in there.
How many mile open channel we have here?
Ah, what is it, I don't know, total, maybe about six miles, so. Basically, I mean, he's estimating about two weeks' worth of work to do it, so with a skid steer, if I, if I know him well, 'cause we've done several projects with him now, he's probably overestimating, so he can come in under when the actual work, but it's enough to cover him if something unforeseen happens, but.
The problem is, is once we take away this, this assessment we've already got out there, what are we gonna do next year?
Yeah.
'Cause it's gonna have to be done again.
And it'll be at least this cost or not more.
And we're also gonna have some historical information to base something on.
True.
Luke and us, and haven't been to this spot before, right?
Correct.
You know, there's gotta be a way that we can come up with a, a plan that maybe it's, maybe it's having equipment that townships can, almost like a snowmobile trail, where the, they come in and do their own deal, a, and we keep these costs out, because these are gonna be ongoing costs.
Yep, and they, they expect that, but at that, at that amount of money, I don't know if they're gonna expect that.
The, the problem is, Commissioner Pop, is if we ruin these buffer strips by going in when it's too wet or anything like that.
Oh, it should be done now.
Yeah, that's, that's the problem, and if we let people do it willy-nilly, whenever they want, you know, it could be demolished.
Correct, yeah, but it's gonna be a higher cost.
What would, what would you think of having Helman go in and do up to the seventy-six hundred dollars, see where we get?
Seventy-five hundred?
Or seventy-five hundred?
Well, I'd entertain that, but then are you gonna entertain when he comes back in and says, I got two-thirds, I got a third of it left?
And it's gonna cost you way more for, for mobilization.
And then you're gonna have the landowners saying, how come you didn't do mine?
Although, although you just have a skid loader on a flatbed, but, yeah, I don't know. Where did the quotes go, how were the quotes advertised?
So we, we advertised them on our website, and I specifically reached out to those that had bid on the repair project, so Pioneer Tree was one of them that had, they might have, now I can't remember, I don't remember if they actually bid on it, or if they responded to it through the advertisement on the website, so I received these by email, that was the instructions, so.
Well, according to that quote, Commissioner Pop, I'm gonna trade in the money at one ninety.
Correct. Yeah.
That's it, but that's literally insane for a skid loader.
Well, like he says, two weeks.
No, but that, that rate is literally insane. You can go rent a brand-new skid loader with a brush cutter on it for probably a hundred and, and you put your man in there for a hundred and thirty bucks an hour.
That, that is correct, but it's a private business doing it, okay? It, it's a little different when you've gotta start adding insurance and everything on there, too, Commissioner Pop, so I, I don't like the price either, but do we really have any control? I mean, we know we have to maintain it.
I think if we ever do get our person hired for that, we'll have some control, because we'll know exactly what needs to be done, when it needs to be done and not, you know, we're kinda going by, driving by.
Well, and, you know, from our August annual meeting, is we kinda all were speculative of what we were gonna put on the assessments.
Exactly, not knowing.
Mr. Chair, what, is it time to have, I mean, maybe we do something with this ditch, because it's ready to go, and it'd be a good time to, to mow it, but is it time to have another county meeting for ditch people, for us, for, for maintenance, just to show them what, what costs are coming in?
Instead of waiting till August, you mean?
'Cause right now, they, they all probably look at us and go, oh, you guys are just making decisions for us. No, let's bring it out to you guys to show, here's what the costs are, and do you guys have any ideas on how we can bring this down? And maybe the townships and, and some of these people get involved and say, hey, how about if we do this? And maybe we bring two or three ideas to them.
Or could the land, landowners say they'll take care of their own?
Some will, some won't.
The problem is, is I, I think Commissioner Johnson, I think Commissioner Johnson said it best, it's almost like two years of getting it established before we turn it over to somebody to take care of themselves, because if you don't, you're gonna have brush growing up again. You need to set, and you need to make sure that's compacted in there.
To your point, is they rut it up and stuff, it's gonna, oh, boy.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, 'cause not everybody's got tracks getting over.
Mr. Chair.
I just have a question. Is there a reason why we're not utilizing our highway department to take care of this until we get a handle on stuff?
Time.
Time and money.
Time and staff.
I mean, this estimate's saying two weeks, so we're saying that our employees at the highway department do not have that two-week span to take care of this?
We can't by law, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Chair, by law, can't put county funds into a, a ditch that needs to be assessed to.
To the ditch.
To the ditch authority, so we would have to charge that back regardless.
Right.
Is, you, you'll get to know this really quick.
No, and I get, I get that, so, I mean, what would our costs be built back if it was done by the county? Is that more or less than a hundred and ninety dollars?
I don't know that, the answer to that question, but the other part is a slippery slope, because then what do we do with the other ditch systems that wanna use our, our county staff to do this? Where do we?
This is only, you're right, Mr. Chair, this is only the first ditch.
Right.
That, that's, that would be the key. It seemed like a small issue for one ditch, but then take that small issue and multiply it over all of our ditches, then it's something that we could not do with our current staffing level or equipment level, so. As far as the cost per hour, I, I don't know that. One concern I had is the accounting, a, and making clear to the public that, okay, when this tractor was driving on the road mowing, we did not charge a ditch, but at the quarter hour, it turned off of the road ditch and then went down the county ditch, then they started charging the time. I felt it was cleaner accounting to say, we solicited quotes, this is the people, the contractors that were interested in doing that work, and this is what the actual cost was to the system. It's, in my opinion, it's cleaner accounting to say, we got an invoice for the work, and then we paid it.
Yep.
We didn't have to say, well, county operator, were you actually mowing the, the road ditch at that time, or were you mowing the county ditch at that time, and, and how did you break up your, your time to, to track that?
You know, here's our other problem today, as we sit here, is that ditch is prepped and ready to be done now.
Now.
We have no snow.
Right.
It's froze. You know, I mean, we've got the conditions set up to do this right now, but, but.
I, I, I go back to exactly what, what Chris said earlier. I believe that he may have overestimated, just to make sure he's covered.
Sure.
I know you, but what happens if we go back to him and say, listen, this is all we have, can you do it? And get it done, you know what I mean? And then we're gonna have to figure out how we're gonna do this in the future, because...
Cut this bit in half, insane, as we've got projected.
Well, no, it's seven versus nine, right?
Seventy-five hundred versus sixteen thousand.
Sixteen.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it would be, it would be.
Yeah, okay, I thought, okay, I was, I was doing best signatures.
Yeah.
But, that, that's the point of the, the annual meeting in August, is to look at, like, what cost did we have this year? What cost do we think will happen next year? What should we assess maintenance-wise?
All right, let's, let's, I, I don't wanna have to send another letter out that this is gonna be this much more. That's not gonna work. Let's do it and pay the seventy-five hundred and see how much we are over, and we can just, can we just carry that? Can we carry it till next, till our next letter goes out?
Um, you know, the, the ditch funds have negative balances already.
Yeah.
Is it the end of the world if it goes over another few thousand dollars?
What are we negative right now? Is it like a million bucks?
So, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause if I remember, I seeing in the, the.
Our financial statement.
But, but that will, will be assessed, you know, and then we could show that we said seventy-five hundred, and this is what it took to do it, so this is not gonna cover it, and see what they say at the annual meeting.
But then you also have to be prepared, if, let's hypothetically, seventy-five hundred gets half of the ditch done. The other half of the ditch.
No, no, let them do the whole ditch. And we pay off this.
And he's saying, carry the remaining.
Carry the remaining.
I see.
And if it's nine thousand or ten thousand, we just hang on to it, and then, when, it'll have to be paid by that, by CD six sometime.
Yeah, yes.
And, and we tell them that this is what we actually did last year, and it costs this much, so what do you people wanna do? Do you wanna let it grow back up to brush, which they don't, it, but this is what it's gonna cost to do maintenance on this.
And then how do they absorb the other seventy-five or eight thousand dollars?
Well, it'll be assessed in next year's assessment.
It's gonna have to be included in August when, if the assessment will be done.
And then you're gonna tell them that, okay, in, in December, we're gonna do it, mow it again for a price of this.
Right.
You know, at, at eighteen thousand, probably, next year, you know?
Well, I would hope, if we stay ahead of it, that number should.
Should decrease.
Decrease.
Yeah, and, and if more landowners start mowing there, then, 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 you know, you just, they just move through that area, and that's less time, and therefore, that's where the cost savings comes in, so.
All right, well, what do you wish, is CD six?
Mr. Chair, I move that we, we do CD six, and we allocate the seventy-five hundred we did, and we pay that out and see how much they get done, and if there's, if there is a remaining balance, we carry it until the next assessment, and then go on from there.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. You understand that? Is that clear enough, Chris?
So authorize Helman to start doing the work.
All of it.
All of it, okay, all right. And then we'll track the hours, we'll inspect it, visit him, and see where he's getting his, track his progress, and then when we hit that seventy-five hundred, and he hasn't completed the ditch, instruct him to keep, keep working?
The whole ditch gets done, it's just that whatever is above seventy-five hundred that we spend gets pushed off till the next year.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Chris, for the, maybe for a potential meeting in the future with all the landowners again, could you maybe come up and spitball basically what it might cost the county? Let, let's just say, not saying putting you under the, under the gun right now, but what happens if, if we could actually buy a piece of equipment?
Right.
And one person that now we, let's just say it's two hundred thousand dollars over five years, 'cause you're gonna amateurize the equipment out, you know, you got your labor, it, it, let's just say it's seventy-five thousand a year, but you, now you spread that out to all of our ditches and say, this one person and this piece of equipment is taking care of all of our ditches, and it could be the ditch individual, you know?
Yeah, and you got, spring is not gonna be a good time to do it. Summer, if we have a dry summer, that's gonna be a great time to, and then, you know, actually, we could've done October, November, December, this year, you know, where we could get it done, that's a, might be something to look at.
And I'm just throwing out ideas, because everything we have right now is costing a lot of money, and I'm just looking at it going, if you times this, times six ditches, which it would never, or nine ditches, whatever we have, twelve ditches, you know, something like ditch three isn't gonna be that much, right?
Yeah, it's not that much.
So, you got different, different, different sized ditches, and let's just say it comes out at a five thousand dollar savings.
Oh, yeah, all Chris has to do is take the number of miles of ditch we got, divide
And then we tell them that this is what we actually did last year and it costs this much. So what do you people wanna do? Do you wanna let it grow back up to brush, which they don't? It, but this is what it's gonna cost to do maintenance on this.
And then how do they absorb the other seventy-five or eight thousand dollars?
Well, it'll be assessed in next year's assessment.
Included in August when the assessment will be done.
And then you're gonna tell them that, okay, in so, in December, we're gonna do it, mow it again for a price of this.
Right.
You know, at at eighteen thousand probably next year, you know?
Well, I would hope if we stay ahead of it, that number should
Should decrease.
Decrease.
Yeah. A- and if more landowners start mowing there, then then then, you know, you just, they just move through that area and that's less time and therefore, look, that's where the cost savings comes in, so.
All right, well, what do you wish is C D six?
Mr. Chair, I move that we, we do C D six and we allocate the seventy-five hundred we did. And we pay that out and see how much they get done, and if there's, if there is a remaining balance, we carry it until the next assessment and then go on from there.
Okay.
My man. Second.
Okay, motion in second. You understand that? Is that clear enough, Chris?
So authorize Hellman to start doing the work.
All of it.
All of it, okay, all right. And then, um, we'll track the hours, we'll inspect it, visit him and see where he's getting his, track his progress, and then when we hit that seventy-five hundred and he hasn't completed ditch, instruct him to keep, keep working?
The whole ditch gets done, it's just that whatever is above seventy-five hundred that we spend gets pushed off till the next year.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yep. Chris, for the, maybe for a potential meeting in the future with all the landowners again, could you maybe come up and and spitball basically what it might cost the county? Let let's just say, not saying putting you under the, under the gun right now. But what happens if if we could actually buy a piece of equipment?
Right.
And one person that now we, let's just say it's two hundred thousand dollars over five years, cause you're gonna amateurize the the equipment out. You know, you got your labor, eh, eh, let's just say it's seventy-five thousand a year. But you, now you spread that out to all of our ditches and say, this one person and this piece of equipment is taking care of all of our ditches, and it could be the ditch individual. You know?
Yeah, um, and you got, spring is not gonna be a good time to do it.
Mm-hmm.
Summer, if we have a dry summer, that's gonna be a great time to, and then, you know, actually, we could have done October, November, December this year, you know, where we could get it done, that's a, might be something to look at.
I'm just throwing out ideas because everything we have right now is costing a lot of money, and I'm just looking at it going, if you times this, times six ditches, which it would never, or eh, nine ditches, whatever we have, twelve ditches, you know, something like ditch three isn't gonna be that much, right?
Yeah, it's not that much.
So, you got different, different, different sized ditches, and let's just say it comes out at a five thousand dollar savings.
Oh, yeah, per. All Chris has to do is take the number of miles of ditch we got, divide away what it's gonna, what would the estimated cost is here, and you can tell us about what we should have annual to, to.
But that, but that also comes with the equipment too.
But I'm gonna play devil's advocate a little bit. Now, if it's the person that we're gonna be hiring anyways, that's probably one thing. But if it's not, what do we do with that person?
The other?
They're not spending the whole.
They're not gonna spend the whole, no.
So miss.
Maintaining ditches.
So that position is not being recruited or constructed a- as an operating position, a equipment operator.
This would have to be another.
In our shop, it would have to be a union position if they're operating.
And if if it was, yeah, if it was actually operating equipment, it'd have to be a member of local forty-nine at, like, an operating engineer.
I know City of Sacrapa's does seasonal. Seasonal hire for that, heavy equipment?
Uh, what is, our y- our union contract may allow seasonal help.
Well.
For that classification, maybe?
But it'd be for October, November, or December.
Or.
Chris, I would need, I need, would need to re-read the agreement, I don't wanna misstate anything.
That's a good point, we would need to check our contractual, uh, obligations, so.
Not as a position or a a duty that has to be done on certain months. I mean, if we're gonna have two feet of snow, you can't go out there.
But we don't know when those months.
No, but we don't know, I mean, you could go all, last year, you could have went all summer, all winter.
You might have a year where you don't get out.
And you might have a year where you don't get out, yeah. But if we could hire a person and buy some equipment and look at the payback time, and maybe this person has to work somewhere else at some other duties in the county, it might be a win-win for everybody.
Might be.
Jeff isn't here, we can put it in him.
Yeah.
No, just kidding.
Well, at the end of the day, we're thinking about things for the future, uh, you know, Mr. Chair, I think we've gotta figure out and move on this and.
I'm gonna call the question, we've got a motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, it's carried. All right, consider final acceptance of repair of C D nine.
Okay, um, so, yeah, we do need to do a final hearing, uh, to, um, yeah, have a public hearing to explain the the total cost of the project now that the repair work is done, um, and and come up with a findings in order to accept the contract. So have just a a sample order here. My recommendation to allow, uh, staff time, there's, there's required newspaper publications, required mailings to send out, uh, with the holiday coming up next week. The earliest, uh, I think, uh, we could recommend would be the first board meeting in February to schedule a hearing. That would be that February fourth, uh, board meeting. Um, and then consider, are you okay with having an online option as well? This draft, uh, public hearing notice has the the go-to meeting link. Are you okay with having online options?
And and what day was that gonna be?
Tuesday, February fourth.
That would be a regularly scheduled board meeting day.
Okay, you sure you're not gonna do it like the twenty-first or something?
No, we're gonna make sure everybody's here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so.
Motion on it?
Yeah, a motion in second to schedule it for, um, oh, and we would say the 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 time, start time, do we just say nine o'clock? Or do we account for regular board meeting time and push it back to maybe ten or so, or?
Start time at ten. At ten, I think.
Okay, so then a a motion and a second for February fourth at ten A M.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
I'll second it. Any discussion on that? For February fourth at ten A M. All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote.
It's carried.
Consider the final acceptance of C D fourteen.
Um, yeah, same thing for C D fourteen. If you're okay having two hearings or combined hearing, but they're separate systems, so same, uh, same notice.
Um, do we schedule that at ten thirty? For C D fourteen?
I think you gotta keep it at ten, cause if we're ahead of time.
Okay.
So.
I'll make a motion that we consider the final acceptance of C D fourteen on February fourth at ten A M.
Second.
Hey, motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, it's carried, it'll both be on February fourth.
So we would send out, uh, Christine and our bi- department staff would work together on sending out letters to all those affected parties. Any recommendations of what you'd like to see in the letter? It may be a good idea to put those costs in there, we can work together and come up with those total costs, which include engineering, the viewers' fees, the buffer strip payments, and the actual construction costs. Um, seem like a good idea?
Sure.
Yep.
Any other recommendations put in the?
I think it's good information, but don't overload them with two pages of information.
Exactly.
That makes sense.
Okay, yeah, all right. Um, very good, we'll do that.
Okay. All right, move on to C D four, discussion of abandonment.
Okay, um, so, in the, very recently, um, the auditor has received a petition to abandon County Ditch Four. And I had our G I S specialist Scott Zwick, thanks to Scott for putting this together rather quickly too. This is County Ditch Four. Um, just for a point of reference, is our Casaw thirteen, Little Rock Lake is over here to the west, County Road seventy-eight north-south here. This blue line is the open channel of the ditch, based on the original establishment records, this is very similar, uh, where it is. It crosses thirteen and dumps into, is this, what is this creek right here? Is this Zuliger?
sucker.
Sucker Creek, sucker Creek. But because of the recent redetermination of benefits, this is the whole watershed. So this is all the benefited area, and why is that important? Uh, and I think Michelle is on the call, and she can back me up. To abandon the ditch, it requires a minimum percentage of those benefiting from the ditch to to sign the petition. And that's a little bit different when it comes to a repair. It requires only one of these owners, uh, to petition for it to repair. But if to abandon it and take it off the books, um, I believe it's fifty-one percent uh, of these benefited owners. Or at least owners that own fifty-one percent of the land.
You might could also add on to that, that is correct, you may need to have fifty-one percent of the property, forty-one percent of the owners. Um, and we currently do not have a sufficient petition, um, in front of us, uh, we don't meet that threshold.
Okay, Michelle, I'm sorry, you're coming in really hot and loud here, but did you say you currently do not have a valid, uh, verified petition for that?
Correct, yep, we do not meet that threshold.
Landowner aware that he needs fifty-one percent?
The people that petition now.
Petitioning?
Uh, I think, um.
Who is the petitioner?
So I think.
Jim, Jim Gans and Lekuski.
So I think we need more time. I mean, Christine has a a petition with some additional signatures on it, um, a- and maybe Michelle explained, there there's two criteria about who has to sign a- a- in addition. There's another criteria, in addition to fifty-one percent of the owners, who all on the parcels have to sign.
Yep, so there is a requirement in the law that talks about requiring every person on the parcel to sign off on the petition. So if you have two people that own the property, both of those individuals need to sign that petition. And currently, we only have one person signing a petition for one of the parcels, and there's four owners. And we have one person for the other parcel, and there are two owners. So it, there's also the issue of the fact that there is a current assessment on the ditch that isn't paid in full. So there's several different issues with this petition currently.
Michelle, can, can, let's just hypothetically say the petition is verified and moves forward. Can we, um, what's the word I want, terminate the assessment or? I mean, if this ditch gets abandoned, you know, we wouldn't wanna be assessing maintenance costs towards the system.
Correct, um, so absolutely, but unfortunately, we have a negative balance in this particular ditch system. And so that assessment that you assessed is covering those costs.
And we're not gonna do any work.
This is for the pitch termination of benefits.
Okay.
But think of it also like this, uh, in the abandonment, uh, statute, you have to hold a public hearing. And there's publication and notification requirements. Other, correct me if I'm wrong, Michelle, other parts of ditch law says that those costs of publication is a cost to the system. So even if we had not done a redetermination of benefits, had not paid out buffer strip payments, there would be some cost to that system just to go through the proceedings of abandonment. And I I just wanna be clear and, you know, upfront with the public, you know, if they're hoping to abandon the ditch to have zero assessments, then maybe unlikely because there is gonna be a cost just to go through the process of abandonment. I guess our goal though is to minimize any costs, if if it does get abandoned, we wanna minimize those costs to those benefited landowners.
Okay, but when is the maintenance assessment gonna go out, February? March? March?
Assess to the twenty-twenty-five as the tax.
Yeah. So I'm taking that the people that came forth would like this done before then, so that the assessment doesn't go out.
But the assessment include the buffer strip payments?
Yep.
So, and some of those people don't wanna cash that check.
Correct, I understand that.
But so best case scenario though, the, if the board pulled away the maintenance assessment, there's still going to be an assessment for buffer strip payments, public hearing costs, redetermination of benefits, abandonment costs, there's still an assessment.
There would be some, yeah.
But if they, if we, uh, if we did away with that ditch, could we essentially get the buffer payments back? And then just say, cause they're part of the the abandonment, get that back, and that, that's a less amount that would have to be paid.
Well, and that's, that's a less amount of people that got paid for the buffer strips than what is actually in the benefited acres, so.
Right.
And and the other thing is, is if someone objects to the abandonment, you have to hire three disinterested people to essentially go out and view the property again. So there's that additional cost as well.
And I think I know the answer to this, but the property owner, it's on him to get this stuff figured out and what he needs to do, right?
Correct, correct.
But, Michelle, we, you know, we've been having conversations last, yesterday, I think we agreed that maybe a a letter needs to be sent to the petitioner just to kinda fully explain this, um. You know, it's, it's something, I see a lot of one signatures. Some of these I I know too, that's like husband and wife are listed on the the deed, so technically by law, uh, the misses needs to sign the petition as well. Because if the misses' name is on the the deed, need that signature, so. And then if it's in a trust, um, I don't know.
Only one party has to sign if it's trust.
Okay.
Yeah, same with the corporation.
So between the three of you, what do you need from us today?
Nothing.
Okay.
Just making aware.
Sure, okay. And is there anything we can do to help?
At this moment, I think if we amend the assessments, we would probably have to have public hearing on that as well.
Okay.
Just, just give them information so that they get this taken care of before March.
Right. Chris, is this the one that Butch Anderson was on?
Yes. Yep, they're, 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 the, so the ditch.
I think they got a lot more steam on this one and, than.
You mean to abandon it? Yeah, they got great steam.
Sure, they just gotta get her done.
And I, I believe there's only one person that cashed the ben- the buffer strip check right now.
Yeah. Cause I was gonna bring up that we need to go out and meet with Butch yet.
Yeah. Um, here we are, ha, just to be realistic of timeframes though, here we are at the end of December. Uh, publication statute re- usually requires about three weeks before the hearing, uh, publish in the official newspaper. We already just set a hearing for the first February, we're bumping up against March just with timeframes and publication requirements, notifications and things like that. So I'm gonna ask a question, uh, for for Michelle. Does the auditor have any latitude that with the assessments, it's, i- it seems inevitable that the the assessments are gonna hit the the tax rolls cause that we've already started that process? That if we're in the midst of the abandonment process, can the auditor exercise any judgment to not penalize people for not paying the maintenance assessment? You understand where I'm getting at?
I think we could look at that and, um, figure out if there is some latitude that Christine could exercise. And if they both cash the check, then there'll be a positive fund balance that could be potentially returned.
Just in the government process, you get processes rolling and you even concurrently, you're trying to do other processes, there's timeframes that were legally bound, uh, to follow that we can't just stop one process because we started a- another process. That's my, the point I'm getting at here.
Seeing hypothetical questions, super question. We, we get through this process, you said March it's going out. March first, we're able to tell you, for whatever reason, to stop the assessment. It's, can that just happen that way, or how does that work?
That's too late.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'd say February first would be.
Oh, wow, well, we're not gonna make that anyway.
We're not gonna make that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And let me remind you, there might be something we could do with modifying that assessment, technically, we can't abandon if there is an active current assessment. So that is the other, that might be undoable. If that makes sense.
I can't hear. So the assessment would be undoable because there's an active abandonment petition?
No, it's undoable to do abandonment if there's not an active assessment.
I see.
Okay.
Oh, God.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, with the ditch system, is there, can you ditch, that's, yeah, count, how can you adopt out of the ditch system, where, is it gonna keep the flow or?
Benefiting landowners have that opportunity.
Yeah, they'll maintain it.
That'll up, yeah, that'd be up to them.
If you dig into that statute, the poor purpose of the public hearing that we hold is to allow public testimony, and that public hearing proves that there is no public benefit to that drainage system, therefore, it gets removed, so. But I think it could take one person saying, hey, wait a minute, no, my water still drains through there. It should stay as a public ditch. So that, I mean, I I guess that's the purpose of having public hearing, is just to let everybody affected get a chance to speak.
Have you, have you been out to this ditch and looked at it?
Uh, yeah, yes, I I'm familiar with.
What, what is your professional opinion?
So the ditch is an open channel ditch, it is carrying, conveying water to Casaw thirteen, um, there's, there's no concerns from a roadway standpoint of drainage because immediately at thirteen, and this was verified with the establishment documents, is where it it dumps into Zuliger Creek, so I don't have a concern from a roadway standpoint that if it was abandoned, um, most of our drainage would drain into the culvert that's underneath our road anyways and would be carried away by, by the creek. Um, it's those that are upstream of it that, I I don't know. I I can't attest though that the the owners and where the ditch physically lies do appear to be maintaining it, um, so it's, it's free flowing. So, we have not gone through the reestablishment process, there, it is possible if we went through that process, we could say, oh, there's, there's a foot of sediment in the bottom of the ditch compared to what, how it was originally constructed. But that, that comes with additional costs too.
Chris, but if they're maintaining it by themselves, they cannot go deeper than the, what was originally constructed, they'll have to go through, if this becomes a private ditch, they'll have to go through soil and water to maintain that.
Yeah.
They can't just dig it twelve feet deep because we're in charge now.
Right.
That's where sometimes though, county ditch is beneficial because, uh, the reestablishment of drainage records is a process that's outlined in statute, so there is a clearer process of how determine what that original elevation was. If it's no longer, it could be soil and water's word against the landowner's word of what that original depth was.
Yeah.
Honestly, uh, folks, if it's not a county ditch, that's less work for me and my department, and I'm not opposed to that, but, um, uh, yeah, I mean, statute is there for a reason to to consider all factors.
Mr. Chair, I think we should set a public hearing for abandonment. And see if we can.
Well, we don't have a valid petition yet.
Yeah, we gotta get a valid petition.
I don't know that we can do anything till we get a valid petition, gonna be a lot of staff time spent.
Sounds like this is just informational.
Yeah.
Pretty much.
Yeah, I thought it was important to at least have a discussion because I believe some of you were probably aware that this might be coming.
So who's, who's gonna contract the people that signed the petition? To tell them that they gotta do more work?
I believe Christine has been having conversations with the parties, and I have been giving her information to relay.
Okay. Thanks, Christine.
I, the, Mr. Chair, the only question I have is make sure that all that information is on a piece of paper of everything that they need to go through so that they don't come back to us and say, well, you didn't tell me this, you know?
Yeah, and, you know, to further add some information, um, I believe one of the gentlemen that was in this morning is very well aware of how this works, he's not like, you know, way out in left field that thinking this is gonna be a free.
Yeah. Um, for additional information, I will, I did you like to point out that all this information is available on the county website, uh, and has been there for a while, um, there's the the viewer's statements, um, that to- talks about the total benefits. Um, there's some additional maps here that shows all the affected, uh, areas and classification. Um, and so some additional frequently asked questions and stuff, so.
You know, miss.
I think the point now is to maybe. I think the point now is to maybe more directly.
Yes.
Provide that information as opposed to just generically point them to a website.
Yeah, and Mr. Chair, all of the information that we need, I mean, we've gotta lay this out. Because in the past, they've always come back to us and said, well, we didn't know about this or you didn't tell us this. I just wanna make sure you're covered. That's all I want.
Yeah.
And Chris, I don't believe that. Other than a few people, I don't think that a, a lot of the people in the benefited acres have a clue that this is going on.
Probably not.
I think they think only the ditch people that lie on the ditch can dictate what's gonna happen.
Uh, a- and that may be. I mean, that's one of the, the constant things we struggle with though. All those people on this map. Received one of these statements from H two O reviewers that talked about it, you know, it talked about that nominal. Charge of a hundred thousand dollars, what your assessment would be, um, and things like that, so.
And maybe they have.
Probably aren't aware because we haven't been as active in repairing and stuff and that, this, this statement was dated January of twenty-twenty-two. So it's been almost three years since they've had direct.
Maybe they have done their homework. Who knows if that, you know.
Well, and I think that's the point of, let's get a valid abandonment petition.
We gotta, they gotta do their work. They gotta do their stuff.
That's right.
Anything else, Chris?
Uh, that's, that's all I have.
Members, anything?